Welcome to the Wednesday, August 20th, meeting of the planning board of the town of Raymond. The planning board will come to order and the board does have a quorum. We'll start with roll call.
Bill Priest.
Greg Foster.
Robert O'Neil.
Bruce Sanford.
Steve Laney.
Benjamin Crowder.
And with us this evening is Stephanie Carver and Jim Seymour from our planning, Chris Hansen, our code enforcement, and Danielle Loring will be taking the minutes. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all of the exhibits that are presented, please notify the chairman if you are unable to hear or to see. The board works from a public's agenda and will be considering tonight's items in the following order. We have two outstanding minutes up for approval and then a public hearing on the Fry Island proposed development, followed by an ordinance workshop for 2015 revisions to the ordinances. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written notice of decision because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights. And also, as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the board has completed its decisions on the project. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate appeals board of the Superior Court as otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual rights to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this board's record evidences your appearance this evening in opposition and the basis of your opposition. All persons speaking, including representatives of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, state your name, address, affiliation with the project, and do that from the podium so we can get you on tape. You must sign the sign-in sheet if you are speaking for or against the project. All persons speaking shall address the chairman. All right. Let's start with the approval of the minutes for our July 7, 2014, meeting workshop.
There's just one typo.
Do you want to just pass that to Danielle or tell her now?
Yeah, it's just on page four. Usual use, end of the second line, "She could not find," rather than "could not find." I'm going to accept the minutes with the typo.
Modified.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. And next would be our July 23 sidewalk minutes.
I'm going to accept as written.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. One abstention. All right, next up is our public hearing for the Fry Island project. I think we're probably all veterans of this process. Jim will give us a quick introduction to the project. I think, and then I'll ask Mark to give us just a overview of the project and then we'll open that up for the public for discussion. I would ask that you please keep your comments to about three minutes or so so that we can move the meeting along and only to address the specific issues of this particular project. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, you have before you the Fry Island Park and Ride Facility located off Cape Road and Quarry Cove Road. It's located on tax map two, lot 11, and tax map 70, lot six. comprises approximately 26 acres of property. This project was before you and was denied, the application, earlier this year. The applicant has come back with a totally revised plan. I will briefly go over that in a minute what the revisions were. Tonight, we'll be reviewing this for two applications. One would be the shoreline zoning standards. In particular, we'll be looking at G, parking areas, H, roads and driveways, J, stormwater runoff and flood protection, Q, clearing and removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, R, erosion and sedimentation control, S, soils, T, water quality. Those are all those standards that fall under the shoreline zoning. And also, we'll be reviewing the site plan review standards, A through, I believe, J. The applicant has provided you a new plan. The plan still calls for a park and ride facility on their 26-acre parcel. The last proposal, I believe, had 43 spaces. This one now has 50. All access points from Cape Road have been removed. The only access will be for vehicles off of Quarry Cove Road. There still is a pedestrian connection from the end of the parking lot to Cape Road across from where the ferry, existing ferry landing road is. Stormwater, obviously, since that time, we've adopted a new ordinance for parking facilities in the shoreline zone. The applicant has revised his stormwater to correspond to those changes in the zoning. Our stormwater will now mainly be handled by a grass filter pond located down near the bottom of Cape Road where the pedestrian access cuts across. Most of the drainage from the park and ride facility will be meandered through a series of ditches and culverts to enter that. From there, enter into the roadside ditch and cross Cape Road and through an existing culvert. The terminus of the park and ride has been designed with a hammerhead turnaround per a fire department request because we do not have a throughway through there anymore. And that will be paved. The applicant has proposed that the gravel, parking lot itself, will be that gravel. The road on Quarry Cove will be paved from the intersection of Cape Road, not all the way to the applicant's entrance. I've given you a memo where I suggest that we pave all the way to the entrance and actually into that entrance just for erosion protection and tracking. Lighting in the parking lot is another concern that I've addressed to the board through concerns of the neighbors. The applicant has significantly downplayed the lighting on the parking lot. They are proposing bollard lighting. We have very strict standards for parking and all I can say at this point is that the bollards do not even come close to meeting our standards for lighting in a private parking lot. The walkway through our sidewalk, they've changed that. Now, they've got a rail going down through there with various LED lights to light the walkway. Again, those don't meet the standard, but they're closer. I think the board could approve with a waiver that lighting. It's low intensity, but it does light the trail very well because there's more lights along the way. There'll still be a crosswalk across the street. And probably the biggest change of all is now the widening of Cape Road from Ferry Landing up to the corner on Cape Road. They're proposing to widen it as wide as 10 or 11 feet for a lane, queuing lane, so that in times of peak period for the ferry use, rather than going up to the parking lot and crossing Cape Road, now they'll simply line up on the right-hand side as you approach the ferry landing. That will require a total shifting of Cape Road. They'll actually be widening Cape Road on both sides of the road and re-striping to accommodate that. The road will be constructed per town standards. I've also suggested some language in there that during that construction phase, if this gets approved, there'll be a full-time inspector for the town out there managing and controlling the construction to make sure that everything is up to town standards. The signage is still there. There'll still be no parking on the, I guess I'll call it, the west side of Cape Road. And because they are consuming most of the existing right-of-way with the road, we had requested that they give us a 10-foot easement on their property so in the eventual utilities or anything that's needed in the future, we have space within the right-of-way. They're going to grant us that as well. At this time, I guess it would be fair to let the applicant give us some more details or updates as far as where they are with the DEP because we just got a copy of that. They've applied for an amended DEP application to bring this in compliance as well.
Thanks, Jim. Mark, just one second. I forgot to ask. You had a question on the legality of the review?
No, no. I was just raising it if it was a potential issue.
Yeah, just to be clear on that, we are, you know, this was appealed. We're currently in a stay and we've contacted our legal counsel and we're clear to review this as a new application.
And I'd read that language myself and so that's fine.
Okay, Mark.
My name is Mark Gray and I'm an engineer who is retained by, who has been retained by the town of Fry Island to represent them on this proposed ferry landing improvements on the Raymond Cape. With me tonight are Gary Donahue, the town manager, and John Crosby, who is our, or the public works director for the town of Raymond. I'll start with Jim's last comment and that is about the stormwater permit. I have had a pre-application meeting with Chris at the DEP and I have submitted the application. I don't think, I don't anticipate any problems. And we pretty much had the thing worked out when we had the pre-application meeting. But I don't know what the timing is. They've only had it a week. I figure it's a little early to rattle their cage. I want to thank Jim for really fitting in the review before he went on vacation on the, I think it was the ninth. I had a mix-up and tried to deliver his review plans to the town office on Monday and they were closed and it never occurred to me that he wanted them at his office. So, he didn't get them till Thursday. And anyway, he got them done. Maybe that worked in our favor because he was so happy to go on vacation, he eased up on things. But it was, actually, it was a very, very good review memo, very helpful. Let me go through the high points of what the modifications that we have not made yet but will shortly make to these plans. First of all, and I'm going to leave that for the last part of my comments, I want to discuss this waiver of the parking lot lighting, which I think is probably the major issue that we want to talk about. I just want to go over that very quickly.
Okay, because I don't think we'll do, we're not, it's just like an overview so that we get into the public hearing and then we can.
Right. I'll just get to high points. The parking lot treatment is another issue, whether it be paved or, and Jim has raised the issue of whether we want to continue paving Quarry Cove Road to the top. That's another issue we need to deal with. We intend to put plantings on the north slope of the basin, which isn't, this back slope here along this back edge is just going to be, probably, I will change that to some kind of an erosion control mix as opposed to, because I want it to return to just a vegetated wild state. But to try to hurry that up, Jim suggested that we put in some planting, some trees. And we're glad to do that. That makes a lot of sense.
Are you showing the rip rap right now?
Nope, this here, this back slope of the basin.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, down here, okay.
Yep. He's asked for site distance. I've shown quite an elaborate site distance, things for the sidewalk that I didn't do here, but I have confirmed that we have the necessary site distance at that parking lot entrance and I will show that on the plans the next time around. We need to have the meeting with your public works director and work out some of the, some of the fine details that he wants to the plans. We have no problem leaving Quarry Cove Road in as good a shape as he needs it to be. Especially helpful were some of the comments that Jim made on the stormwater. He wants a larger-scale drawing for the parking lot, which I will do so you can see the grading more clearly. He picked up a belly in a ditch right in through here that I hadn't caught that needs to be fixed. We want, oh. Also, there's an interceptor ditch that I have put in here to keep stormwater flowing this way from going into the basin so we don't have to treat water that doesn't need to be treated. But we need to put in a downslope in here and then get the water to the, you know, to the culvert. And some, just some routine things like check dams and silt fence. We do need to talk about the Cape Road culvert, which is this one right here. In the past, I have recommended replacing that. The public works director has indicated that he prefer not to. And this may be something that you guys are happy as long as he's happy. So, I will, I will get with him and find out exactly how he wants to proceed with We have, we have received test bit data and additional survey data and the pond elevation does meet the requirements of the DEP so that it doesn't have to be regraded. In other words, the groundwater table is low enough so that it doesn't intercept the bottom of the pond. Oh, Jim also mentioned, which is a good point, that we need to put some no parking signs along through here so that folks coming out on the way out, you know, the vast majority of time, you know, we're not going to be needing both of these lanes, it's only at peak times. So, there may be, you know, a tendency or a. Maybe not a tendency, but a, folks may want to park along that edge. So, we're going to put some no parking signs in there. And then we've got to work out the final details on this easement that we're giving the town north of the sidewalk and up to the property line. Got to make sure it's shown on the right number of sheets and that you guys have, you know, D-descriptions and we register it in the town and get the attorneys to bless it and so on and so forth. Other than that, I think the major issues that we need to deal with are the, you know, the lighting question and the, and the paving versus gravel question. Now, in terms of the waiver, I guess I can just, we can wait that later. It's more of a technical discussion and the arguments can wait till later.
Correct.
Any questions before I sit down?
Board? Any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, nope. Thanks, Mark. All right, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. I would ask you please to proceed to the podium. Please state your name and your address and then your concerns either for or against the projects. Please keep your comments about three minutes.
I don't know if this is on. Can you hear me?
It's only for the TV.
Yeah.
It works.
It works?
Yeah, it's not a speaker. It's just so that we get you on the DVD.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, my name is William Nosker. I live at 47 Quarry Cove Road down on the Cape, the very same Quarry Cove Road that they plan to use as access to the parking area. At Quarry Cove Road, we have a road association consisting of about 30 homes. And we all contribute money every year for the maintenance of that road. Anyone who has property on that road should by nature, you know, by common sense, be part of that same maintenance agreement. My concern is, does this board have the right to, give the right for the use of that section approaching the parking lot when it's a private road? The town makes no contribution to the maintenance of that road. It's all done privately by our road association plus a road association of similar nature on Papoose Island. I don't know if anybody's here from Papoose Island this evening or not. But they contribute and we contribute to the maintenance of that road. Now, if there's going to be 50 cars parked in that parking lot, are they going to contribute to the maintenance of that road?
Yes. That'll be, I mean, they have a right to that road, as in a butter, on that road. They have the right to use the road just as every other individual on that road does.
If they participate in the maintenance.
Correct. And that's something we will work out.
Well, I can tell you that our association, the last year, I think we spent $300 per property. And there's 30 properties in our road association. If you figure one car per, then they should be paying 50 times that.
Do you have a formal road association agreement?
Yes, we do.
That might be helpful for us to be able to reference.
Well, we have it. We've had it for a number of years.
Do we, do we have it, Jim? Could you, would you send it to the town, to Danielle, for us?
I'll get in touch with our president and I'll have them deliver one to the town.
Thank you.
Now, I might add that I've lived on Quarry Cove Road for 32 years, purchasing the property then. Prior to that, I lived on Fry Island for 12 years. The last two years that I was out there, I was president of what was then the governing body. I have occasional contact with people on Fry Island right now and everyone that I've talked to out there says the people on Fry Island don't want this. Now, I can't dictate how they elect their officials or who's calling the shots there, but there doesn't seem to be any popular support for it on Fry Island as far as I can see. But my main concern is the maintenance of that road.
Okay.
And 50 additional cars would be the equivalent of 50 additional residents. So.
Okay.
Yes.
If I remember correctly, this was supposed to be way, way back. I believe that when they put, you guys, they put the gravel storage area in, that I remember being told that Fry Island was part of the road association and was paying in.
That's true. That's true.
Okay. My memory is correct.
But what are they paying? Here's my point. They have a parcel of land, what, 26 acres?
Yes.
I have two acres and I pay 1/30th of the cost of that road. If they have 26 acres with 50 cars compared to my two cars, are they paying one or are they going to pay a multiple of one?
Well, I think that's, that would be up to your road association.
Yeah. We'd have to, we'll take that.
Well, that's my point, sir.
Okay.
It is up to the road association. And that's why I asked the question. How can a town board make a decision on a private piece of property that is being paid for by the residents down there?
Jim, I think.
Do you have the right to do that is what I'm asking.
All the board has to do is show that they have adequate right, title, and interest for access to their property, which they have submitted. What agreements they have as far as the burden on that and the association is a civil matter between you and Fry Island. It's not the town's purview to solve that. All the town needs to know is that they have rights to access their property through Quarry Cove Road.
But the town is the very body who is putting that burden on us to work it out with Fry Island.
No, that's Fry Island. That's nothing to do with the town.
Nothing to do with the town.
All we're doing is approving the project. How the situation, you know, gets worked out between you and Fry Island is between you and Fry Island and if, that's a whole separate legal matter.
Well, it is a separate legal matter and I will tell you this, that as a resident down there and we have a bona fide road association, I will be seeking legal counsel for an opinion on this in terms of what they should be paying for the maintenance of that road.
Okay, sir. Is there any other issues that you'd like to bring up?
Excuse me?
Is there any other issues? Because we have to keep moving.
No, that covers it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? It's got to be somebody else. Mark, you can join us down front.
I like it in the head.
He backs the charge and leaves the retreat.
Keep the door.
My name's John Ewalt, 121 Wild Acres Road. Wild Acres Road, obviously, a butt's at Cape Road and Quarry Cove Road. I have several concerns. I believe I sent a letter to the board. I believe the board has it. I just want to touch on them very briefly just for benefit of the audience here. I'm concerned about the widening of Cape Road to include, to include a paved waiting area and also a paved drop-off area and a paved passenger pickup mailbox area. If we're going to have an area for dropping off cars, it seems to me that the reverse, when people leave the island, would be, the driver would run back to the lot and drive around and need a place to stop to pick up passengers and luggage and whatever. Also, in plans that I've heard about relocating the mailboxes, having a paved stopping area for picking up mail would be helpful for the year-round residents. Second is, I would suggest that the paving of Quarry Cove be done in a manner so that it would meet town road standards as a minor street so that the road association could approach the town and have that portion of their road taken as a town, accepted as a town road and then the maintenance problem then becomes a town issue rather than a, like a road association issue. If that were part of the approval, then that would certainly expedite and resolve, I think, some of the gentleman's concern of Mr. Nosker. Third, the concern that most directly affects me and my road association that I'm a member of is the installing of culverts, ditches, and other stormwater management things to keep the runoff from Quarry Cove Road from eroding Wild Acres Road. And I drive down there this evening after the gully wash we had a couple days ago and we've got eight-inch erosion of the road base right along the side of the road. You can also see where the stormwater has come across the road just by the marks in the gravel. So, having those stormwater management measures taken as part of this project is something that I believe the board should require. Next would be a requirement of posting a performance bond so that the improvements to the public roads as well as the private roads happen just if for some unforeseen reason the voters in Fry Island decide that, as Mr. Nosker seems to indicate, may have some objections and decide halfway through, the project doesn't get funded and Wild Acres Road keeps eroding and the additional things on Quarry Cove Road don't happen. So, I would suggest the board make that a requirement as part of the approval. Finally, post a, putting posts in the center of the pedestrian walkway just to keep some smaller vehicles from inadvertently driving down the paved pathway, maybe something at each end. Installing low-profile lighting fixtures in the parking lot, I think that's been addressed. I would ask that if that still is a major issue, that the board either consider waiving the requirement or requesting the zoning board of appeals to approve a variance for lighting in parking lots that are located in residential zones until the zoning ordinances can be revised so that we don't have commercial area parking, lighting requirements in residential areas. And then finally, a plan for managing the allocation of the parking spaces among the 500-plus island residents who might like to use those 50 parking spaces and avoiding traffic congestion when the lot is full. In my, in my letter to the board, I believe I included an alternative proposal for how that could be done. I have a road around the parking area with diagonal parking in the center and lighting around the periphery of the parking lot directed inward would be one way then if the lot is full, somebody drives in, drives around, no place to park, exits. Just a thought, but that's it. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Something else?
My name's Gary Donahue and I'm the town manager of Fry Island. And to start off, I'd like to say that we're sensitive to the issues of the Raymond Planning Board and the Friends of Raymond Cape and Quarry Cove with this project. But what I'd like to say is that we wouldn't even be here for this project if we didn't have a majority of the people on Fry Island wanting the project. So, basically, what we're trying to do at this point is get through the permitting process and. and do everything we folks want us to do to make this thing right. I take my hat off to Jim Seymour and my engineer, Jim Gray, Mark Gray, for all the effort they've put into this project to try to get it so it is sensitive to everybody. But even if we get the permitting process, we still are gonna have to go, the fact of going for bidding, and then it'll have to be approved by the town again. So, we're, we're a distance away from doing the project. We're basically just trying to get permitting to see if it's feasible to do the project. So, I'd just like to make that to you guys, so you understand, okay?
Thank you.
Kevin Fay, 11 Sprider Road Way, Raymond Cape. Just wanted to piggyback on a couple of the comments that Mr. Ewalt made about lighting. Though it's one of the concerns that I think dates back to 2012 when the project first came up. I was forwarded some documents, and I appreciate commentary from both sides about lighting standards and what's appropriate and whatnot. My understanding, not having been involved in any negotiations between concerned taxpayers on Raymond Cape and the parties out in Fry Island, excuse me, my understanding is, what you're seeing tonight before you is almost a negotiated compromise, particularly with regard to, it's obviously one component piece, but the lighting being in a negotiated compromise. Concerns about the lighting was definitely something that cropped up time and time again. Coming up with the bollard lighting as opposed to like dispersing overhead lighting and poles and things like that. My understanding is that was a kind of meeting of, of things in the middle. Folks on Fry Island and folks on Raymond Cape coming together and getting to sort of a good place kind of in the middle. At this point, I think it's like, while I'm not a huge fan of this project overall, I think you guys have seen me a lot sort of opposing this, but where we are now, I do think it's like what we're, what we're seeing tonight is sort of like the, the best of what needs to happen, given that this is an allowed use. Whether or not it should be allowed is an entirely different sort of argument and discussion. But when you think about sort of lighting, I guess the whole thing that I'd go back to is sort of the argument about, you know, are standards blanket standards for the entire community? Or do we need to have some sense of context and what's appropriate for an area? I think Mr. Ewalt commented on that at some level about sort of like rural residential areas, wooded areas. And is what's appropriate for that wooded area the same thing that's appropriate in a commercial zone? I think a lot of the standards are intended to be kind of like, you know, standards for the entire community. And I think we need to be sensitive to the environment, sensitive to sort of our neighbors, and sensitive to sort of, I guess, sort of the dispersal of unwanted lighting. I think, you know, dark skies and being able to maintain the rural character of the neighborhood is something that's incredibly important. In terms of, one of the, the documents that I did read had to do with safety. Now, when we think about safety, is that safety from a standpoint of crime and criminal activity? Or is it safety in terms of operating motor vehicle safety, safely rather? I think in both cases, I think the, the lighting that's proposed at this point is appropriate. If you have limited bollard lighting, I think if someone's coming into sort of a parking area in a wooded area, I think they have to acknowledge and be prepared for sort of, you know, they're not gonna have overhead lighting. They need to drive appropriately and in a safe manner. I think the lighting that's been provided in this plan is appropriate in that regard. And also, if, if the thing was, was lit sort of with overhead big commercial lights, that might actually, I've read some literature that suggests that there might actually invite a little bit more crime, given that, you know, if you have a lot of crime, excuse me, if you have a lot of lighting, it provides a more contrast between the lit areas and the darkened areas, and it actually makes things more inviting to any sort of like, you know, criminal activity or illicit activity. So, at this point, I mean, as I said at the beginning of my ramble here, I'm not a big fan of this, but if it has to, if it has to go and if it, if it's gonna be allowed, I think the lighting in particular needs to be, if a waiver is required, I would endorse a waiver on the part of the board. So, thank you for the time.
Thanks, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, my name is Barb Lovell, 77 Wild Acres Road, and I believe you've read more, more recent documents that I've sent to you with schematics of bollard lighting and studies that I spent rather amount, considerable amount of time. I would just like to say that John Ewalt and Kevin have really nailed it. You know that I have not been enthusiastic from day one, but I also have been part of the negotiations, and because it is so written parking lot, it's there, it became apparent to me and others that we had to live with it and deal with it. And I implore you, and I don't speak solely for myself, but many others, that you seriously consider a waiver because the paintbrush for Route 302, paving, highlights, don't serve our neighborhood, our neck of the woods. There has to be, and it was announced at the town meeting, that there was going to be consideration of wording and looking at the wording of ordinances and definitions. And again, I implore you to look seriously at that. One quick anecdote, anecdote, it is an anecdote. Sunday evening, a week ago, I was on the island for dinner. And pitch black, Sunday evening, there's an Exodus from Fry Island, lots of cars. We had dinner, I lined up in the queue to return. I'd like to point out the lighting there and the situation. Cars parked for dining, getting a hot dog, getting an ice cream cone, golf carts there, kids walking with cones in mouth, and car lights off as a courtesy. And there is one parking lot, light, that is twenty or whatever number feet, one light. There's another light lower, I would guess about fifteen feet high, that is more central toward the eating area. Then there are lights on the gantry, but pitch black, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been a catastrophe there. Get on the ferry, cross over, and thankfully, we don't have lighted moorings and buoys and markers, moorings. But we then pull up to Raymond's gantry, which has its two lights on the gantry, a light near the, oh, I call it a trailer, and then some twenty-five, thirty yards down, one light. There's a lot of traffic going on there. To my knowledge, there's been no accident. And I'd just like you to think about that, and that, that happenstance of me being there and returning in the pitch black, and there didn't have to be the lighting, and there was a heck of a lot of traffic there. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I know I've written a great deal, and lots of my friends have as well. Thank you again.
Sir? Nope, sorry, this... Yes, go ahead, go ahead, ma'am. Sorry.
Gloria Coffin, 119 Wild Acres Road, I'm a resident of Raymond, and all I have to say is, because I've sent you a letter, that I am still opposed to this and mostly on the basis of the safety issue for the crossing the road and for the fact of any change that is of any significance. Considering what Barbara said, there have been no accidents that have been recorded in history. So, I'm still concerned, I'm still opposed, so just wanted to make sure I said that.
All right, sir. Thanks for your patience.
Good evening, my name is Charles Flyhive, I live on Whittamore Cove Road, and I just have a few quick comments. I am concerned, I, I am opposed to the project. Our property does abut the, where the parking lot will be. Concerned with the lighting, the, the noise, safety issues, enforcement, as one gentleman said, with crime or what have you, how you define it, I guess. But Raymond has no police department, Fry Island has a chief and maybe one officer. If something comes in the night and we hear noise or something, who do I call? You know, call Fry Island, send the ferry over, wake up the chief or whatever, I don't know. But, and the lighting is a problem too, the light does go through the woods. I think if this parking lot goes through to fruitation, it will drastically change the character of, of our neighborhood drastically. There's no room for a parking lot. I feel bad, I don't like it myself, but I feel worse for the people that live up there on Quarry Road and Wild Acres. When this first came about, I think it was promoted as a safety issue with phase one, two, and three. And as people have said before, there's, there's no, there has been no accidents or safety issues to my knowledge. And also, I've heard in the, I, I applaud Barbara Lovell for all the work that she has done on it. I have heard that there is some sort of a moratorium, if we put, if they get fifty parking spaces, nothing else happens for seven years. Seven years is a short time, when does it start? Why did, how did we go from forty-three to fifty at the last one? And as a gentleman said earlier, I spend a lot of time on Fry Island and all the people, and I've attended meetings there. Most of the people I talk to on Fry Island are opposed to it. However, keeping in mind, if, if Fry Island votes to continue with the project, I think it's, I'm not sure, maybe fifty, but the most sixty voters that can vote on Fry Island. That's out of four hundred and some odd residences. So, that, that really isn't what you might call the, the voice. I'm sorry if I made a mistake, sir.
It's okay.
Could someone tell me how many registered voters you have in Fry Island?
Well, under the Fry Island charter, we have what they call Board of Island Trustees. And that would be everybody that owns property on Fry Island. And anything to do with municipal government or land ordinance use, everybody has a vote on. The SAD six school district in Cumberland County is where the registered hundred and four voters of Fry Island have a control. But the, when, when you talk about whether or not the people of Fry Island want the project or not, it's overwhelming the number of the five-hundred homes that do want the project.
Oh, I, I guess I talked to the wrong people, but, you know, again, way from the beginning, what's the goal, what, what is it going to solve? Once you park your car there and you walk over to Fry Island, you may, you go a hundred yards or whatever, carrying all your baggage, et cetera. What do you do when you get on the other side of the ferry? Do you rent a golf cart or somebody pick you up? I, I don't know, I just don't know what the purpose of the project is right from the beginning. And as I say, we are opposed to it and we are rebuttous to it. We do have water runoff, I'm not an engineer, however, there are springs up in there that come down through our property, go under, under Whittamore Cove Road and out into the lake. So, I, I would hate to see a lot of hardtop paving going on up there. Thank you.
Hi, John Schutz from Fry Island. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. A few people have said, most, quote, "Most of the people of Fry Island don't want this project." I'm not gonna try to quantify it, except to tell you that I very much do want it, and most of the people I talk to definitely want this parking lot. We're not gonna go into the long, I won't go into the long story about why we need it, but the, the main word that I have to use is safety, both on the island side and on the, on the Cape Road side. The safety is the issue that we're all after and trying to solve. So, again, like I said, most people in Fry Island do want the project to go forward, and I'm one of those. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, my name is Jerry Kearney, 141 Wild Acres Road. This project is quite, quite a difference from the original one, and it looks like an accepted-type parking lot and parking facility. In my past life, dealing with safety issues on the police department, one, we never had allowed, we never allowed driveways or walkways into an intersection. And in this proposal, what I see is people dropping packages and other pedestrians off, heading up into the parking lot, and the people they dropped off are already heading down to the ferry, and the driver runs down that, into that intersection. That is where I think we're gonna have our safety problems, running across that intersection. And here again, we are addressing lighting. And that is close to a very fast curve. And so, to me, it's a very big safety issue, that walkway coming down into that intersection with somebody trying to make up the catch to the family. Thank you.
Mike LaBelle, 12 Sebago Road, Raymond Cape. Forgive me if I go a little longer, but my, my land directly abuts the Fry Island Ferry. So, I have a few more concerns, I think, than, than the rest of us. When I first heard of this proposal, you know, I was kind of torn. I tried to stay realistic about it and try not to jump to conclusions. And knowing that, I, I know a lot of people out on Fry Island, I've done business with them. They're great people. I love being out on, on Fry Island, I love taking my son out there to eat and grab ice cream. So, I have no ill will whatsoever toward the island. I actually love it, if I didn't have a place where I do, I'd buy a place out there. And I'm not going to stand up here and try to embellish or exaggerate the number of, of people on Fry Island that want or do not want this project. I will say for a fact that I haven't come across anyone in my dealings out there that are pro parking lot. I've only come across people that do not want it. I'm not sure what that means, but just wanted to state that. My concerns are a little different than others. I mean, my perspective here is, is that, for one reason or another, a bunch of people on Raymond Cape do not want this project.
Mike, I know, I need to interrupt you for a second.
Yep.
Because this is now, seems to be a running theme. The board does not care, to be perfectly honest with you, whether or not residents of Fry Island want it or don't want it, because we have no, we have no impact on that. We, we are only looking at a project that is being put forth by the stakeholder of this property. And, and we can't, we can't kind of decide that a project is go or no-go based upon whether or not people are telling us that the residents of Fry Island don't want it. It, it, that, there's no way that that's gonna get factored in. And I know, and I guess I should've said that earlier, but that keeps on, it seems to be now a running theme.
Right, I-
And it, and it doesn't, and it doesn't matter, because it doesn't impact. I mean, so, you know, it's not a-
Okay, I would just, I just mentioned that because I guess everybody else did, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
Okay.
The last gentleman said that he wasn't going to go into why they wanted it. I would love to hear that. Well, I'm just, it would, it may make me understand, but to this day, I haven't, no one has been able to tell me. That's why I'm glad that Mr. Crosby is here. I've been dying to have him attend one of these things, because I know for a fact that he is one of the people out on Fry Island that are really pushing for this. And, and I'd love to know, I would love to know what is, what is the reason? It might help me understand and maybe say, yeah, okay.
That perhaps after this meeting, you might be able to get together with him and talk.
That's okay, you know, I, I'm for it.
Okay. But I need you to keep your comments to the project, that-
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm just trying to understand it.
I understand.
Because I have a lot, a lot in this. I mean, my family has owned land right next to the Fry Island Ferry for over forty years. My father-in-law has, has helped reconstruct that ferry landing. All right?
Yes.
All right, so we have a lot at stake.
I'm not denying that, and I would like to hear your comments, but, but your comments about whether or not, how many people on Fry Island want or don't want the project, I'm just wanting to let you know, have no impact. You know, carry no weight.
Okay, that, that's fine. I was not aware of that, I'm just trying- I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure this out, so I can understand it, so I can make an educated decision.
Mm-hmm.
That's all. I'm just trying to be fair, you know, and, and I'm right there. I could easily just say, hey, you know, this is not, this is not a great project, I'm not for it. One thing that concerns me, that I am directly impacted by, is as it stands right now, there's a pin, my, the property line, there's asphalt on that pin. And so, what happens is, the people coming down to get onto the ferry, they just, over the years, they just cut and cut and cut. What originally was supposed to happen was, you're supposed to go out and then actually take a left-hand turn onto Raymond Cape. It's more of a straight shot now, which also contributes to the safety factor, because people can come off the ferry and just go straight up and, and get up speed pretty quick, you know, and just sort of look to the right, yield, and get onto Raymond Cape. The original plans for this was, the road was supposed to, Raymond Cape or ferry landing was supposed to come out more of like a, a T and take a left. As it stands now, is pavement over right now, one of the property line pins? So I'm just wondering, you know, I'm concerned that this is going to happen and they're going to encroach, encroach, encroach. So what I'd like to ask for is a fence that Fry Island pays for and they put two, so there is a delineation there and a clear line where my land starts or ends and their land starts.
Mike, I'm sorry to keep you up here.
Sure.
But I'm pretty sure I remember you. You're the prophet, you own the prop, the house, right, that sits right to, onto the side of, going towards ferry landing on the right-hand side? Is that correct?
Yeah, so before you get to the ferry landing, on the right, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I placed it correctly.
Sure.
Okay. And so, and the, and what you're, so, the, the, the pin that you're talking about now is-
Is currently covered in asphalt.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, who is going to enforce the, I, I understand, I was told, you said that there are going to be no parking signs? Who's going to enforce that? Who's going to enforce people not starting to park there? Because you know, it is my assumption, I may be wrong, that eventually people are going to get tired of parking up in that parking lot and they're going to park on the side of the road, down there, eventually. Now, if I don't have that fence put in, essentially, they're going to be parking on my land. As it, as it is right now, those mailboxes are on my land, the, the pin is on my land, you know, so when people are talking about paving near the parking, near the post office or the, the post office boxes, guys, that's my land. So we can't really just go and say, hey, let's pave on Mike LaBelle's land. All right? All right? Okay, so let's, so I need, I need you to consider having them put in a fence, so we know, so they can't, you know, take the snow from the ferry, dump it over there, which they've done. So I can't, you know, and then also I have people, I brought in my boat the other day and I saw a whole group of people coming through onto my land and, and launching kayaks off of my property. There has to be some deterrent there.
Okay.
So trash pickup, we've gone down there numerous times, tried to pick up the trash around there, left obviously from people visiting or living on Fry Island, and then tried to deposit the trash in their dumpster. We were shoot, we were shoot off. We just need some cooperation there, you know, and some common sense. We've had numerous people over the years from the ferry come up to our house if they missed it, knock on the door late at night for a ride, offering us money for a ride.
Once again, Mike, this has nothing to do with the project.
It does.
No, it doesn't.
I'm talking about the fence. Like, put a fence there.
All right, we got that. You'd like a fence. Next.
And then, has there any, has there been any talk or research into the septic system down at the ferry landing?
Yes.
And how that is going to be affected?
There has been discussion, and if you hang out, you'll hear some more about that.
The septic system?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So my major thing is just to make sure that people aren't going to just grab on land and put that stuff there, you know, so let's-
Tell it concerned.
Right. If, if that is brought all the way over to where the pins are, I need a fence there so they don't start parking and keep going and encroach. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, now, we'll close the public hearing portion of the stand review. Before we completely leave that, I just want to make sure that we have all got the letters that the board has received, the copies are still to review. One from, I mispronounced these names. Rabba Orsag, we have that one. Rabba, it says, Rabba is how she pronounced it, 71 Leisure Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
We brought the last back.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Gloria Coffin and Paul Coffin, besides Barbara and John's, which have covered. Is that, we all have all those? Everyone else has?
Yes.
Anyone with additional ones?
Barb's all over.
Yeah, Barb's and John's. So we'll include those public hearing records.
There's another one, too. There's one other letter, too, from Susan Gleason, which was part of our packet.
Small print.
Okay, thank you. Mark, do you have any, any response that you want to mention, or do you want to? Yeah, to all those comments.
I was a little concerned about the-
The property line encroachment that was, so I want to, I want to make sure that I understand what the concerns are, so that we make sure that we don't encroach on, on your property. But beyond that, I was just going to let things come up as you, as they come up in your discussion. Okay?
We're going to start in right on the shore and zoning.
That's what I was thinking.
The first one is the one that's going to bite right into it anyway, so.
Is that the-
We'll maintain self-safe and helpful conditions.
I think that's a good place to start, anyway. I think that's where the most interest is. Let's, let's work through that. Lighting, let's get, let's get that.
Let's go for it.
Let's, let's, let's just do it. So let's work on the waiver for light. It's a little out of order, but I think that's what most people are interested in. So let's, let's tackle it.
Would you like me to make my pitch?
I would love you to make your pitch.
All right.
Is that, I guess, is that all right with the board?
Absolutely. I'll have some comments, but yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, you have, you all have a copy of the waiver request, of what I'm calling formal waiver request. The first half of it is, is basically an informal argument to, you know, appealing to your common sense, which I know you all have, and I know you'll agree with it. The second, the second piece is, is the A through E are an attempt to address the individual waiver requirement or criteria. And in hindsight, I wish I had, I wish I had, you know, you know, listed them out so that I could defer on them as, as I go. But in essence, what we're talking about here, this is all being driven by our, and when I say our, the town of Fry Island's, a desire to try to be sensitive to the impact of this development on those who abut it and are surrounding. So this is all about what's appropriate for the neighborhood out there. We've had lots of discussions with folks in, you know, both formally and informally, and in meetings and just, you know, talking on the side of the road. But it's very clear that lighting is a huge issue. I have done some, a lot of thinking about it, and the difficulty with ordinances, from, from your point of view, I've sat on boards before and I know the difficulty, is that, you know, you have a limited ability to really play with that. You have to, you have to play by the rules. I think, though, that the argument that we're trying to make is that the one-size-fits-all kind of thinking with the parking lot lighting, which is very appropriate in most commercial endeavors. It's absolutely, you know, what you, what should, should happen. The argument that I'm making here is that, that oftentimes in that kind of a situation, and I go back to the Walmart parking lot, but if it's any, any, you know, high turnover-type parking lot, there's going to be lots of opportunity for pedestrians and vehicles to interact. You want to make sure there's plenty of light. You also want to make sure, especially at intersections, where there's, where intersections by their very nature are places where there, where vehicles and pedestrians interact. So you hire, higher illumination levels there makes sense. So your ordinance makes sense, but like all ordinances, they're written with a, with the eye toward solving a particular problem. And I think the challenge before you as a board, and what we're appealing to, is the idea that this is not the problem that the ordinance was designed to solve. And what we have, what we've provided you here with is the minimum amount of lighting for a pedestrian to actually navigate from the back of their car to the sidewalk. In other words, our intention is not to light the parking lot in a traditional sense, is simply to provide enough, enough guidance so people can make it to the, to the parking lot. And we're unabashedly making that recommendation, and that's the idea behind the bollard lighting. And, and the lighting along the walk, I think Bruce, you had the idea of putting in, well, strip lighting. Our first pass at that, we had strip lighting right along the entire edge and it probably would have reflected off the moon. We had such high, you know, lumen intensity levels. We had to back it off so that we only had one piece of strip lighting every, I think it's eight feet on center, in order to get it down to a reasonable level. But even though it's hard to read that, and at that scale, the software that does this kind of thing doesn't work very well, but it's very clear that there's plenty of lighting along the walk. That's not going to be an issue. It's mounted on the bottom and it should not have a real big, you know, you know, reflective impact. In fact, the biggest concern I have is that we get too much lighting along the walk. So we've, you know, toned that down. But it was, it's very effective. I think it's much better than the bollard lighting along a linear access like that. But I think the, the argument that I'd like to make to you, and we can talk, I'll let you deal with A through E and decide whether with a straight phase you can, you know, you can agree with that. But in terms of the common sense thing here, what we're really thinking is, in informal conversations with my lighting consultant, who's a, you know, is an employee of the vendor, I asked him about that and he said that, you know, when you have low intensity levels like that, your eyes adjust. And what you're going to be doing is, you're going to be moving toward, from one kind of pool of light to the next. And it won't be difficult at all, you know, to, to walk down through. You're going to have a graded parking lot. It isn't like you're going to, you know, trip on, you know, big rocks or roots or anything like that. This is, this is going to be a very relatively smooth, smooth surface. People are going to park, very likely nose in, they're going to have headlights on their cars, so they're going to be able to get in and out. This is not a high turnover parking lot. This isn't like, you know, the, you know, the 7-Eleven or even a Walmart, where people are going to go in and be out in half an hour. These, these folks are going to go in and park and stay for at least hours, but probably more like portions of days, day at a time. So this is not a high turnover kind of situation where, you know, high intensity lighting would be a safety issue. The other reason for a lot of lighting, and I did some, some, a little bit of research about this, is if you're going to monitor a parking lot, for example, if you're in a high crime situation or you have, you have a problem with folks breaking into people's cars and so forth, and you put in, you know, monitors and so forth, you need enough lighting so your monitors work, so you can see what's going on. And there is also a, a bit of a deterrent involved. If, if you're trying to break into a car and you know you can be seen, it's a little less attractive to do it. So there's that piece of it. But in terms of mugging or people being accosted, you know, that way, I don't think that Raymond Cape is a, is a hotbed of criminal activity. This is a relatively benign area. The safety issue, I think, I'm sorry, did I miss it?
A lot of B and Es.
Pardon me?
Breaking and entering.
Breaking and entering. I, oh, I know, I've lived in, you know, especially in the off-season.
I thought those Fry Islanders coming over, right?
You didn't mean that. I know you didn't mean that.
Stuff just switches every season.
All right. Well, moving along. The idea, the idea, I don't think that, that the intention is to prevent people from robbing cars. If that happens, I think the, the folks in Fry Island are willing to live with that. What we, we really want to do is to, not that we want that to happen, don't get me wrong, but the idea is that we really want to accommodate our neighbors. And I think that the folks on Fry Island are more than happy, given, given the, you know, Barb's earlier comment about the, the way things work on Fry Island, there isn't an awful lot of, you know, overhead lighting on the island, on the island. In fact, there isn't any paving out there either. It's very, which, we'll leave that argument for the next agenda. The idea here is that, I think this is adequate. In this particular circumstance, in this place, this spot on the planet, I, I really encourage you to, to consider this waiver in a positive way. You heard enough? Heard enough, yeah. I can do it again if you- I know, I know.
Comments on lighting?
Let me hear from Jim. I just want to make one thing kind of clear here. We've kind of lost a little perspective on the lighting standard. The town of Raymond lighting standards for parking lot is a minimum standard. It's, and it's not implied to be a Walmart or shopping center type parking. It's the minimal that we would have in a small, commercial-type lot, a professional office or something like that. Walmart parking is substantially higher than the town standard. You're looking at foot candles, five to 10 foot candles, 60-foot poles, you know, multiple heads-on poles. We're not looking for that type of lighting. We're looking for the lowest to meet a safety factor, and I don't know if it's necessary for criminal as it is for a pedestrian getting out of a car, feeling safe, walking across the parking lot, being able to see where he's going in all conditions. The standard is an average of one and a half foot candles over the parking lot. That doesn't mean you have to have 1.5 foot candles all over the entire parking lot, but there's got to be an average. The proposal that they have with, with the bollard lighting is, is far, far below that standard that we have, such that realistically, the bollards only light approximately two parking spaces, each bollard, only two parking spaces would meet our town standards. So the other consideration that I think we, we've had in our parking standards is, "Such lighting shall be shielded in such a manner as to not create a hazard or nuisance to adjoining properties or to traveling public." The closest abutter that I can see, just with Google or anything like that, is almost 300 feet away from the nearest point of the parking lot. Not the nearest light, the nearest point of the parking lot. There's a high stand of trees. This is sitting up higher than Cape Road and is slightly higher than Quarry Cove Road. So there's ample buffer. I think the thing that we need to look at is, the bollard light is good, that it's at low intensity lighting, but it's not high- but it's not high enough, it's not getting enough coverage on the lot. We're not asking for 30-foot poles or 20-foot poles. I've talked to Mark, and, you know, I think something in the 10-to-12-foot, you probably get away with four lights and probably meet the town, closer to the town standards than what's being provided at this point. And then, the lighting for the walkway, it's still below the town standard, but I think that's something that the board can evaluate, whether or not, you know, we need to hear from somebody's consultant or not. I don't want to go there, I really don't want to, you know, incorporate that kind of money. But if it helps the board, maybe that's a direction we need to go as well, is to get understanding of what foot candles mean and what we are trying to protect. And lastly, the, the other standard is for lighting at an intersection, and, and I think, Mark, you have provided a light at that intersection with a crossing.
The crosswalk.
Crosswalk. And that's supposed to be an average of three-foot candles. So obviously, we want to light up the areas where we have pedestrian crossings. So with that, I'll let the board deliberate, but I just wanted to give you a little background as far as the lighting standard itself.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
When we were out there on the sidewalk, it would be very clear that it is elevated above the Cape, Cape Road. Did you go back to your lighting consultant and talk about some way of positioning the lights, using that elevation difference to basically block it from view?
No, I, I think, as, as we, as we discussed in the, you know, on our, on our walk, depending on where you stand, for example, if you're, if you'll allow me here, if you, if you're along, say, this area, anywhere from here all the way to here, because of this, because of the elevation difference, it'll be literally impossible, even with lights on poles, to actually see what's going on, to actually see the lights through the woods, because you're being blocked by the terrain, okay?
Right.
However, in this, and even from here, you've got, you're coming up, you know, fairly high, plus you have to look through the woods, it would be hard to see. What you would, the most you would see would be a glow. You couldn't see the lights themselves. However, and I think you were the one who pointed it out, as we were walking down through here, there is a view shed in this direction, okay? Whereas that, where folks who are walking along or coming out this way, where there would be a pretty good shot up through the woods where you would see, you would see lighting. So...
My, a couple, my issue is, I'm, and I'm on, I'm on the lake, and if everyone remembers up at the Raymond Beach, when they, when they put those lights in originally, when they put the lights in originally, they shot them straight down the lake. And it was, it was horrendous. Now, they moved them, same intensity, different positioning, and you barely see them now.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm getting at. I'm not a lighting expert. I'm just wondering, is there a way to, in fact, with positioning of lights, come closer to the town standard? And the other thing I was thinking, I've been thinking about this a lot, and residents of Raymond will probably jump all over me, but I think you need to consider that if someone bought that property and built a house there, you're going to have lights. You're going to have lights coming from that house, because they can have as many outdoor lights as they want on a house, they can have indoor lights. So I would hope that the residents would say, okay, we'll, we'll tolerate as much light as would be coming from a house, if a house was built there. So I'm more along the lines of, I, I look at this, and there's so many dark spots that you just don't have light. There are zeros all over this, this plot, and I, I've been, I'm nervous about not having enough light.
At the sidewalk, we talked about the rail along the pathway and putting lights along continuously. And after the sidewalk, I thought, well, maybe a middle ground on this whole lighting of the parking lot issue might be to put a narrow island down the center of the parking lot, widen the parking lot to accommodate the center island, and then put the rail with continuous lights down the center of the island and down each side of the parking lot, with the ones down the center of the island in opposing positions, and then the ones down each side, lighting that, and that would give you, by your map, you know, .5, .6, .7, .8, pretty evenly along most of the length of the parking lot. Be, it's more lights, it's going to be more money for the rails and the lights and everything, but maybe a middle of, middle of the road avenue would providing a more even, not overpowering glow along the length and the breadth of the lot.
Well, I'll, I'll consider that one, although that's, it's hard to evaluate something until you work it through. But the, the, just, just wanted to respond to what you said about the zero lumen, you know, intensity on the pavement. When you, when you, when you're looking at the analysis that is done here, you're looking at what, how much light actually lands on that spot, okay? When, when you're walking along, what you, I think that the, in terms, I know I've walked a lot in the, in the dark, as long as you can see a light source up in front of you, you tend to see the reflection of it, and your eyes adjust. It's not, it's not going to be, I mean, I'm very comfortable that the level of lighting that we have out there is going to be adequate to, for pedestrians to navigate that walk. Now, whether that meets a safety concern, and I, I don't just, I don't, I'm not, I think that Jim, I respect Jim's opinion, but I think that the issue for me is, can pedestrians safely navigate that parking lot? And I think that they can, that's my opinion.
My issue is more, on the other side of this, a dimly lit parking lot at the end of a dead-end road. That tells, that's, to me, that says spells opportunity for everything. And people in Fry Island are relatively wealthy. You're going to have some pretty, probably some pretty nice cars parked in that parking lot. I just see, I'm going back on the crime side of this, on the great place for teenagers to hang out. It's just, to me, it seems like an invitation.
Wait, let me get Ben in here, because he has no chance.
Yep. There's a couple of things, at least, that I've been considering listening to all this, and a lot of it is with regard to the, the safety concern. And I know that the town has minimum standards, and that we have minimum standards, but I know that we also have the ability to waive those minimum standards depending on the conditions. And I know that there's been a lot of concerns about the safety of protecting pedestrians while they're walking through the parking lot, but it seems to me that the people that are requesting that light level are the people that are going to be exposed to that risk, and that is the residents of Fry Island. If they're willing to assume the risk of walking through a parking lot that might be lit less than the minimum required standard for the town of Raymond, and in, when I say assume the risk, if something happens in that parking lot, it's not going to be the town of Raymond that's going to be liable, it's going to be the town of Fry Island that's going to be legally liable for what happens there. I think that a variation in order to meet the, the conditions of the community wouldn't be out of the question.
Jim?
I, I hear Ben, I hear his rationale. I just want to point out to the board, this standard that, that the town has, obviously, takes into account safety considerations when it discusses those light levels. The other thing you opened the door for is setting precedent for everybody else in town saying, okay, I don't want to light my parking lot, I'm willing to take the risk. You open up that door, and I don't think that's something you want to, to open up. You have to, I understand that there's an opportunity here that they're not going to be able to hit the 1.5-foot candles in the parking lot. At the same token, I don't think it's acceptable, in my position, guiding you as a board, to accept so many zeros in a parking lot.
And I think it's relative to the nature of the parking lot, whereas everybody else that comes in might be presenting a business parking lot in a more commercial zone. I don't think that this falls into the same category, and I don't think it would establish the same kind of precedent.
Again, I just want to point out, you say zero, that's dark. Mark's pointed out, that's the lights on the ground, that's, that's darkness. That's, and, and even the .1s and the .2s are extremely dim light levels.
No question.
I, I want to go back and touch very briefly on, on, on the safety issue of the paved versus an unpaved lot. The lower the level of lighting, whether it's even glow across the lot, as might be done with, with my rail suggestion, or the way it's currently set up. I'm only 60, only, I'm, I'm only 63 years old, and I find that it's not hard for me to become unsteady on my feet if I'm in an uncertain situation that I'm not used to. Maybe it's dark, you're walking on gravel, it's not hard to turn an ankle, or stub your toe, or have a piece of gravel work under your shoe where you lose your balance a little momentarily. It happens, and I find it happening to me more and more. I'm not 80 years old. I, I think that the lower level of, of lighting that we accept on this lot, whether it's spotty or even glow, as opposed to a town standard, argues more and more for paving the lot and getting the rocks and the uneven surfaces. Yeah, they're going to grade the lot once or twice a season, but there are going to be times after rain and after heavy traffic, July 4th weekend or other, or, or otherwise, where wheel traffic is going to create more uneven spots in that gravel. And the lower the lighting, the more opportunities for somebody having an accident that could be avoided. And I personally would be much more in favor of seeing that lot paved, despite the fact that it's, it's not conducive to the rural character of the lot, but given the usage of the lot and the potential for injury, I think it should be something that, that would be better done than not.
What do you guys?
Is there any way to find out what everybody's talking about?
Yeah, that's...
I mean, I don't have any idea what 1.5 candle is. Is that enough, isn't it enough? It's very subjective. If you can't go see it, is there any way we can, lights on the back and go look at it? See if it works. How do you figure that all out? I mean, because we're not going to agree on that unless we all say, oh, that looks pretty good. Yeah, right, you don't need to go for the other day. Because we will never get a result.
Right. So, alright, well, two things. One, I think, the, as far as the walkway lighting goes, the rail lighting, I don't think that is, that's an issue for anybody at this point. Is that true?
That's true. The walkway lighting, no.
Okay, so I think that's, I think that, how you've got there is, is fine.
And we're averaging .5, 6, 7, and 8 along the length of the walk.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's no dark spots.
Which is half the town standard, and if we could do that to the whole lot, then that would be wonderful.
I have one question I had. You said when you did it originally, it was way too much? You would, you had more, what made it way too much? You had more strings of lights, or?
Yeah, what this is, is it's strip lighting.
Okay.
Okay, you, you get it in one-foot lengths. So I originally, I put the post at eight feet on center, or 10 feet on center, I can't remember now, but in, in between, I left a foot on each side, and I, and I packed them right in there. Like, you know, how it'll work. And, and it was, it really worked really good.
But relatively, it would be relatively easy to add more if, in fact, you found out later that you needed more light on the path?
Oh, goodness, yeah.
Okay.
There's all kinds of rooms to do that. We'd have to probably add some more transformers, but not a big deal, all the wiring would be there.
Yep, okay.
But I really am not concerned about that at all because of the, you know, the... The problem with the bollard lighting was, it was so expensive, the fixtures, you couldn't afford to put them in at eight feet.
Right, right.
These fixtures are far less expensive. You can put them in, you know, one every, so you get a more uniform lighting. And it's also directed straight down because of railing. It was actually a pretty good idea. So, I love your friends. Don't send by your consulting fee, though.
So, Mark?
I work here.
How do we, how do we reach the point where we have the minimum lighting, which certainly the residents want? And my brothers would be, you know, I'm wrestling with this because I would fall on the side of no light at all. But, you know, but we, but we do have an ordinance that we have, we have to meet, we have the safety considerations to do it. So how do, how do we reach the point where we can have the maximum amount of lighting that is not, that doesn't bleed out, you know, past the canopy of the trees, and give us this over, and give the residents a glow above the parking lot, which we don't want? Right? How, how do we, how do we get to that point? Because I think right now we're, we probably are too low to that point, but I understand why, why, I understand your position in presenting it this way. And I don't think it's Fry Island's position to present this way. I think this is, this is what you're trying to kind of meet the minimum standards for the residents. And, and I'd like to do that, too. So, Jim, you have?
I just had a suggestion on that. Again, the, the ordinance allows, obviously, for you, the board, to waive it. It also suggests, the other thing is, I don't know if everybody's aware of the type of lights that we're going to be looking for on a pole, which are very low-profile, full-cut-off lenses shining directly down, not the type of a can that you have out there that, you know, emit light in all directions. Lighting is very scientific and specific now. They can aim lights, as Steve has said. I would rather see a 10-foot or 12-foot pole, four, maybe six, max? I don't know, I don't know what the light level is. Lower with aimed heads going to the center of the lot, rather than, you know, aimed at the roads or any directions like that. I think with low poles, strategic aiming, we can accomplish the goals of the board and accomplish the goals of the neighborhood.
I agree, but it's going to be difficult for us to, you know, to go one way or the other on this without actually knowing what we're doing. You know, I mean, we do a lot without knowing what we're doing, but, but we'd really like to know a little bit more. So, you know, is there some way that we could, that we could do that? We could take Jim's suggestion, 12-foot poles, 10-foot poles, whatever that works, light the whole parking lot with directional lighting, and then, and then get a feel for, you know, how much that's going to drift out over the canopy. And also, I'm wondering, which I, and maybe I might have missed it, but are we planning on doing this all night long?
No, it was a timing. Was there going to be a timer?
There's a time, I didn't see it in the waiver.
Was there going to be a timer one hour after the last ferry that it was shut down?
We have no problem. I mean, the, I think the last ferry on weekends is around midnight, and they could be turned, turned off after that.
Okay.
I didn't see, I didn't see that.
Sure.
Have your, if, if possible, have your lighting guy look at my idea, look at Jim's idea, and come up with a couple paragraphs and a general narrative of his overall impression of the effectiveness of either system, given what our, what our goals are.
The, the, the other thing that, Mark, you may be able to do the consultant, if not, I know it's available, is to give the board a little bit of a table, to give them an idea of what light intensity, what .1 light intensity equivalates to, and, you know, I know our full moon, for instance, is somewhere around .2 or .3 foot candles. Just to give you some kind of spectrum. But when you get to those higher levels, you know, it doesn't incrementally jump up. Maybe we could just have some idea of...
Could give you some sense of what that means.
Right. Or, or like, a typical Walmart lot, you know, with that, what's the lighting underneath a pole in a typical Walmart lot? Is it 10-foot candles, the 5-foot candles? Some kind of comparison, so we can say, alright, it's definitely not a Walmart parking lot, but it's not a full-moon condition either.
I wanted to make one comment, a little off-topic, tied in. And that's the issue of gravel versus, and the safety issue of lighting. I just wanted to point out that there's, there are, how many miles of gravel road on Fry Island?
14.
14. 14 miles of gravel road. There are very few streetlights out there. The, the Fry Island Public Works Department maintains all those roads on a regular basis. It happens all the time. All the residents out there walk very safely on those gravel roads. A gravel surface is something that, you know, folks in Maine in the summertime. It's not, especially Fry Island roads, are going to be more than...
If, if there's adequate lighting, yeah, but I mean, on, on a night with no moon, walking down a gravel road can, can be dicey, as a political forum.
I mean, what, what I'm saying is, there's very little lighting on the roads that these folks walk out on Fry Island. There are lots of dark spots. The idea, the, we're not proposing, we're, we're actually asking you to waive the requirement for foot candles on the parking lot completely. We don't, we're not even, we're not even attempting to light the surface of the parking lot. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make, and I think that that's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm completely yielding to, to Jim's argument, because Jim's arguing something completely different than what we're arguing.
Right, right.
What we're saying is, we don't want to light the parking lot. We're trying to provide navigation lights, more than anything else, for folks on foot to, to travel down the middle of the parking lot. If you look at the, at the location of the lights, we've got them at, at the end of these islands here. So if you, and most of the parking is going to be done, I mean, if you're, if you're got a brain in your head, first guy in is going to be in that parking space. And then they're going to, it's going to fill from this end up, because the, you get a longer walk. And, and if, if, if my guess is right, this is going to be utilized probably most of the time right up in here. So folks are going to come in here, they're going to park, nose-in, they're going to get out, and they're going to walk back between their cars to the middle of the parking lot. And then they're going to say, we got to get to that sidewalk. And what they're going to see is these lights down through here, we've got more, they're denser as we move light rate through here until we get to the, but they're just navigation lights. Think of it as a, a lighthouse.
But I think, I think, Mark, what we need, what, what is, is that, what, what we need, in order to make a waiver determination, that we're not going, that we're going to waive the requirements that are, that are in the ordinance, we'd have to see, just to, to some degree, what those, what the impact of the lighting required by the ordinance is going to have. And because you can't wait, we can't, we, I think the board fully understands, and agrees probably, I don't want to speak for everybody, but agrees with the, the need not to put in...
but agrees with the, the need not to put in the Walmart parking lot, right? And to have a, a huge light canopy over the parking lot. But I don't think that what, given the topography of the, of the land and given how far back it is, I, I couldn't say that putting in the lighting that's required by the ordinance is going to have any more impact on the light pollution than not putting, than putting in something that's less. And if we're going to waiver what, what the, what the ordinance says to do, we have to know why we're waiving it. And, and right now, you know, I don't have that. And I would, I mean, I, and honestly, I would like, don't like, but I mean, but we, but we've got a.
I haven't given you enough of a reason to waive it.
Right. Because we don't have the other side of the picture yet, right? So, I mean, if in fact, I mean, if in fact, you know, Jim's idea of 12-foot poles, to shine it down, to light it, you know, come closely to the ordinance, produces lots of light pollution, you know, every, all that light gets through the canopy, you know, then it's very easy for us to make a decision. But right now, it's very difficult for us to make a decision because we don't have both sides.
I play one more, one more thing very quickly.
Yes.
When somebody parks a big pickup truck in front of one of those bollard lights as the parking lot fills up, they're gonna be blocking that light completely, which argues more for Jim's point of having a, you know, eight or 10-foot pole sticking up periodically. So, that's another piece of the puzzle.
Can I throw one more thing out?
Yeah, good.
I would be, I would be, feel a lot better, and I don't know if you've considered this, have, have you considered camera surveillance on the parking lot? With down into the trailer down below, so I mean, for, for a lot of reasons, to me, that way you get, you're monitoring who's parking there a lot more, even in the daytime, rather than walking through twice a week, and they're not that expensive. And it really, to, to my aspect of the safety aspect of break-ins and everything else that's going on in the parking lot, it might be a, a really increase your safety.
Weatherproof cameras about $3,500 possibly.
Really?
Yeah.
The other thing that leads to too is you're gonna have to have.
I bought them at BJ's.
Yeah, you probably got. Even if you have security, if you have security cameras, they're kind of intuitive going against the grain of lights, because to have a security camera pickup activity, it's gotta be well lit.
Then you have to pay someone to watch the security camera.
They're already in, they're already in, they're already in the trailer. There's people in that trailer. Just something to consider, to look into. And the other, one last thing.
But you said already.
You said.
That's two things.
Are we still working on that last thing? All right, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I think you need to, in your waiver, you need to address this intersection. Because the ordinance states, you need three-foot candles at all intersections. And at quarryco road and in entrance to the parking lot, you have no light. So, that needs to be addressed. Especially if it turns out to that, that becomes town road, up to that point.
It's getting a tempting road.
I know.
Yeah. Want that even last? All right, so, wait, the, I think the waiver on the, on the lighting is going to hold.
Yeah, I'll lie next week.
Is that? I took this on hold. Do you have clear enough guidance to what you think we'd come back with?
I do.
Okay.
But let me, let me ask a question here. Are you, are, I guess, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking about my next meeting with the folks that we're gonna have with the friends from Raymond Cape, with the representatives. And what you've told me is that you haven't rejected the idea of our proposed bollard lighting, but you need more of a reason to say yes. And you want to compare that with Jim's solution to see what that might look like, and maybe even take a look at it, how sensitive that would be, especially in the view shed to the north, how, how difficult that would be to see.
Yes.
Okay. But, so, so then, our proposal is still on the table, you just need more information to deal with it.
Correct.
Now, if I'm not, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, say so, because I.
I'd, I'd also like it to see a comparison with that even glow of, of, of the rails, if that is financially feasible. Versus, Jim, it could be the three rows of rails with continuous lights is gonna be, you know, three times the money, but Jim?
Well, I can tell you right away that I prefer not to do that, because in order to make that work, we'd have to make the parking lot substantially wider.
Yeah.
Substantially wider. It would add, it would add another entire lane.
You don't wanna do that.
And we prefer not to do that from a number of points of view.
So let's just go with those two. And I, and I think that, and I'll let the board, is there anybody, is that fairly stated? Does anybody, what Mark just said?
Putting words in your mouth?
This is one, one, the, these are 360 bollards?
Yes.
But those are all the ones that are facing the, the road?
Yeah, those were, the, the ones in the parking lot are 360 bollards.
Because I thought last time you talked about 270s.
We did.
Well, I don't think they make 270s. I think you can get 180s or 360s.
Paint the, or you can paint the shield or something on.
Oh, yeah, we could, we could probably do something like that.
Okay.
But, but at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter that much, because pointing in the woods doesn't, they're, they're so low. It isn't gonna be an impact for anyone. So, plus, there's gonna be a tree right behind it too.
Is that? Okay. Good, good, good. All right, so now, one, just one last thing on this.
Oh, you were still, I mean, we're still on the whole safety thing. We've got other components to deal with the safety.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I just wanted to get, do this, do this part. When does, when does the ferry stop running? It depends, day to day.
Weekend of November. So, what selection date, the?
November 3rd is the last time the ferries will be running for residents.
Can they start up?
Uh, April 27th for residents, but probably DPW probably 10 to 14 days before that.
Okay.
But it's just one run in the morning and one run at night. And the parking lot doesn't have to be open during that period.
Okay. All right. All right, Mark?
Yes.
All right. So we don't keep on coming back and forth on this. I think that'll, put it to bed.
Sure, if you give us some more.
It is.
All right, so now we can start. We can start in.
So I think, Mr. Chair, the, the other concerns you have with safe and helpful conditions have to do with the queue, the pedestrian crossing, um, and the drop-off areas are probably the three areas that you need to consider for safety.
One other I wanted to throw in was the emergency turnaround at the end. Why that L configuration instead of a circular? Maybe Mark can comment on that. I, I think originally it was a circular, and now it seemed to have changed.
I think we asked them to do that.
The, the emergency drop-off at the end of the lot, it, it's kind of almost like a double hammerhead, and I thought originally it was a, it was a circular.
No, it's completely different. I never proposed anything but that.
It's always been a hammerhead.
That's, that's what the kind of ordinance requires. I think a, a cul-de-sac type of thing would require a lot more velocity.
I'm not going to use this.
I'm not sure anywhere.
I guess my concern there with somebody who drives to the end of the parking lot, um, is gonna have to, you know, turn left into the hammerhead, back into the other hammerhead, you know, just to turn around as opposed to just going around and kind of lose heat.
This is a very low frequency. Jim, are you in Shoreland?
But a fire truck.
What's that?
Yeah, that's huge.
For the safety?
Right, yeah.
Yes. It's one of the, you got nine conditions under Shoreland zoning provisions. You want the page?
Yeah, please. It happened to, you, you switch these.
It's on page 47 of 65. It's under section 16D procedure for administering permits.
47 to 65? You in the old one now? The new one?
Um, probably in the old one still, but if that, that didn't change, but section 16D.
16D.
You're probably going to have to pay a page.
You know, but it's. It's not. On, on 47, I got soils and water quality.
51 of 70.
Of Shoreland?
Yes.
Should be section 16D.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Paragraph D.
Yeah. Thanks. All right. Let's go. Jim, do you have one more time for us, please?
Yeah, the, the conditions I think that the board should investigate have to do with the queue, the widening of Raymond Cape, uh, Raymond, of Cape Road for the queue lane, the safety of that, the safety of the drop-off location, the safety of the pedestrian crossing, and Bruce, you had.
Well, it's not an issue now for the, the, the emergency turnaround.
Emergency turnaround, yeah, but those are the three, um, that the board should consider, whether they feel will be maintained in safe and helpful conditions.
Cue, first up. Concerns?
After we saw it, the sidewalk, I have no concerns.
I have no concerns at all either. Widening of the Cape Road. Concerns? Right-of-way's been taken care of? Right-of-way's been taken care of?
I think with that, you heard.
Right, Mike's fence.
Yeah, exactly.
Would you guys be opposed to putting at least, when you, when you widen the road? Do we curb it?
Oh, you have drainage issues if we curb it.
No, you curb it, you curb it, you put a whole different, you, you, we have to concentrate the drainage. What you want it to do is sheet it off as it does now. What we're talking about now, we're, we're essentially, and this is a point that Jim, or a question Jim raised while I was. Okay. And that simply, that's, what, what I've really done is, is centered the road in the wide-of-way more than it is now. Like the peak, essentially, or the middle of the road is also the drainage divide for the road and the road. So what we have is drain, the drainage sheets off on one side of the road onto the adjacent property line. And on that side, it's, the land falls off, on the west side, the land falls off. So the drainage pattern isn't any different now than it is, I mean, then, than it is now. And on this side, it's the same thing, and there's a ditch. Because it, the ditch starts, you know, a little bit further down, sheets off, and then it becomes a ditch and is tributary to the cul-de-sac. So the drainage essentially stays the same. It's just a little bit more privileged than what it was.
But, when we're talking about drainage, where are we necessarily?
No, we're talking about how to, how.
Protect this general little property.
His property. Yes, and the, the concern is, and I'm going to, the concern is that folks try to, is this the area where they like to launch their tie-ups?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, what, what you, in an ideal world, what you'd like to have is a fence along this property line right here. Is that right?
Yeah, uh, it's gonna attempt, just so they don't start parking on the other side of that, because I think if you don't have a buffer there, I think they'll just push and keep pushing, or take what they can.
Yeah, what we've, what, what we've got in here now is, is it's essentially no parking. And we have, there's, there's staff right here. So it's gonna be very difficult people, for people to leave a car there. And it's, it's a very legitimate question that was raised earlier by one of the folks in the public hearing about how is that gonna be enforced? And I think we haven't wrestled with that yet, but we need to do that, because it does need to be enforced. We, for, for everyone's benefit, but we can't have folks parking wrong here, so.
I don't think the sheriff can touch that once it's off the Cape Road.
Say it again?
I don't think the sheriff's department can touch that once it's off the Cape Road.
Sure you can. He never, we're, we're part of a company, we pay the company, he would.
But. So is it, I mean, would that be up the ride or?
For parking though, I think not for.
I'd have to do some research on this, but I would be under the assumption that the land is in Raymond, so I'm not sure if the Fry Island Police Department would have any jurisdiction in the town of Raymond. That would be my first thought. Second thought I would have is where Cumberland County, I assume, is your police agency?
Mm-hmm.
That we would probably call them can state that we have this parking lot, we have this parking area, and these drop-offs, and these parking ordinances that you folks want, that we expect you to enforce. But they will do that?
I don't believe so.
Can Fry Island just put up no parking, put the Joe's Garage in Bridgeton? And you just hire Joe and Joe monitors it?
Are you Joe's?
No, I'm just saying, you know, that'll happen once, and it'll ever happen again.
We do that now along the ferry landing, and we police that ourselves. We tow vehicles that are parked incorrectly, that are not off the pavement and, and in the right-of-way. Yeah, we do it all the time.
You have refused to tow vehicles that were partially on your land and partially on, I don't know, my land or now.
I have never refused to tow vehicles.
You have, so I told you.
Not, not the.
Okay, anyway, that does need to be dealt with. All right, so, Mike, back to you here.
The town of Raymond does not.
I misunderstood. This is off of Ferry Landing Road that we're talking about.
And therefore, the Cumberland County Sheriff would not check it.
Yes.
All right. I think the question is, and I think it may be appropriate to put some kind of maybe chain link fencing or something to, just to keep people off his property. It's private property.
Right.
People don't know that when they come down there. They assume it's Fry, Fry Island. Will they put up signs, fencing? My guess is the only thing that's gonna work is some kind of fencing.
Right.
The other thing is, for the piece up along Cape Road where it also gets close to Mr. LaBelle's property, one thing I can guarantee you, we're gonna have plenty of with this project, is rocks.
Yeah.
It may be an idea to, on the property line, because you're gonna have a surplus of, and I don't know what you're gonna do, that's a question I'll have for you when you get into construction. It may be beneficial to, you know, pull some of those out and place them along there so people can't park further into the property or off the shoulder of the road.
Right, and what about even, even as the, even as the fence along?
It, you, maybe, maybe.
For you? I think it'd be better than a chain link fence.
They still get their kayaks through though.
Yeah, but you can put a couple of.
Rail fence would be better.
People at property, private property.
Or maybe at least a fence from, like, along the ferry landing.
Mm-hmm.
And then rocks up against Cape Road.
Sure, good.
Maybe a fence from here to this hill, and then maybe rocks up in here.
Yeah, where's your house? Where's your house on his property?
Right here.
Up in there, okay.
So right now, the, the asphalt is over this pin.
One thing.
That's, that would do it immediately.
I was gonna bring this thing, it showed up. They're widening that area, and that, where, where people are parking now is gonna be the major queue line.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So if a car parks there, that's gonna stop the queuing for the ferry, so I mean, they're gonna have to tow them. Because there's no way they're gonna be able to park there, because they're actually, I believe, if I'm correct, you're widening that whole asphalt section, and that's gonna become the main queue lane. So, I don't think parking is gonna be an, an issue. I think more trespassing is gonna be an issue in that area.
Right.
Let me, let me, let me, if I, if I may, I think the idea of a fence along this property line makes good sense. We have, we, and it's our property. Done. So we can do that.
Right.
So, that's, that's, no, but on this side here, you still do, and I think this is a legitimate problem, because people are, if you, if, if this isn't policed, people are gonna park here and walk a lot quicker than they're gonna park here and walk, because it's closer. So, in fact, Gary just suggested that what we can do for a distance along through here is maybe we can put in some type 3 guardrail, if that isn't too objectionable, right at the back of curb. There's only, I've forgotten, there's only a three-foot shoulder through there. So if we put a, a guardrail right at the back of curb, then it will be literally impossible to park on that unless you park on the lane. Now, that, that would help that. I don't think, I wouldn't carry it much back farther than here. If you get much beyond that, I think it starts diminishing returns, because then, you know, it's actually not that much different. You know, so, but if we were to do that and put fence in here, that would, that would at least make it difficult. I don't, in terms of, of enforcing parking, the town of Fry Island, because this is private property, can, can tow it, just like any, just like the, the poor businesses adjacent to Trader Joe's have taken to doing. You know, nobody wants to, nobody wants to provide parking for Trader Joe's, and, and we don't want to push parking out on, on a butter's land. So that seems like a solution that would, that would put that away.
Again, I guess my concern would be, who would be enforcing it? And I'm just, I guess I'm just not confident that Fry Island would enforce that.
With no parking? We can't, we, we, we will not be part, enforcing the parking out here.
Oh, not out there? No, 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 no.
You're talking about right along through here. But we'll have a fence on it anyway, so the fence, whether, whether.
Right, I think that should solve.
That's gonna solve the problem.
A guardrail will solve it all the way up?
We also have to take into account, we can get out on the main road,
Yeah.
that originally I granted the postal department, but more like. That originally I granted the postal department, the one I had to put the postal boxes, which is now on Mike's land.
Right.
So you're going to have to figure out what to do with where the postal service is, because they'll, they'll be stopping right in the wide lane.
Yeah, we're, I think we're, we're putting them across the street.
Yeah.
They're moving.
Those are moving to the outside of the road, right?
Well, subject to...
We, we have to kind of stop this discussion, okay? I just wanted, I wanted to bring Mike in, because this was something that he brought up.
We're a problem solver, we move here.
Well, you can guys get problem solved after the meeting. We'll bring up the problems, you solve them after the meeting.
All right, sounds good.
It does bring up a question, though, with the mailbox, because that is a, another kind of destination point for neighbors and the postal service, so could you point out, please, where that, where you plan on moving that?
There have been, there have been a couple of point, uh, um, one, one was, there's the, there's the current one. I'm trying to remember where we put it. It's essentially across the road, just, just essentially across the street.
So we're going to put it on our property on, on the other side. You guys kind of, that's where you wanted it?
Right, we asked you, yes.
Okay, right.
Yeah, so it's just moving across the street.
All right, there are other stuff on widening of Cape Road, just, oh, the, the, the additional road, actually road itself...
Right.
Is, is going, the maintenance and long-term maintenance of that road is going to fall to...
Maybe the town of Raymond.
And that's going to be something that you're going to address with the selectmen?
Yes, we, we need, apparently, I'm not sure whether we have to go to the selectmen or not, and talk to Mr. White. He seemed to think that he had, um, a limited amount of authority to allow that to happen.
Oh, okay.
But I am going to, to have a meeting with Mr. White and discuss some of the issues that, that have been raised by our planner about the construction, quality of the construction, monitoring of the construction, all those kinds of things.
All right, uh, drop-off area? Is there any else, problems on, on the winding? I think that they solved lots of problems. Drop-off? We have concerns?
One of the comments you had was a concern of the pedestrian crossing so close to the drop-off area, and the concern of pickup. Um, maybe Mr. Gray can address, you know, the, the plans for that or how that will work.
Is there, is there anything that I can, I can add to that?
Well, just the question is, Mark, is, is if somebody uses the drop-off, then they're probably going to use it for a pickup, so how do they, do they go to turn around to get in the pickup area?
Yes, if they do pickup, that's right. Well, I guess what they will have to, they'll have to, they'll have to move and turn around, if they have to do.
A pickup area across right there, across Cape Road.
You mean, have a, have a Cape pickup area on this side?
Yeah, just between the opposite drop-off or just after the drop-off.
With the mailboxes.
With the mailboxes. Use the mailboxes. Use the mailbox area and widen that out a little bit, and call that your pickup area.
I'm trying to, I'm thinking, uh, right now, and I'm thinking that...
Yeah.
I'm thinking that it's far, this, the use of this is going to be far more likely to be drop-off than it is pickup. I think, I think if, if there are going to be people, be people coming up over, over onto the ferry, um...
Yeah, who would you be taking out?
I think that they would tend, they're going to be tending to just walk, all walk to the car. Um, I don't really see it being used as a, as a, as a, um, pickup area nearly as much. It's more to, more to drop people off and park and then go across. So, I, I mean, that's the way it's always been envisioned. That doesn't mean that it won't happen, but if it does happen, what, what folks will have to do is find a place to turn around and then come back.
I think, I think they're going to take their bags across the street and park them, and then come around again.
They can, they could. I mean, there are...
So that's a pickup area you're talking about.
Yeah. It's possible that they pick up there. I just think that it's far more likely that, um, it will be used as a drop-off area, because people, people don't leave all at the same time. It's usually, it's them arriving all at the same time that's a problem. Because when people leave, they're limited by the fare when they arrive or not.
Yeah, how many, how many are on the ferry?
Pardon me?
Card?
How many do you have?
Yeah. All right, how about the last issue here on, um...
Back up one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, get...
Whose, I guess this mailbox thing is kind of new, I didn't really think about, whose mailboxes are those?
Mine.
Okay, so they're the, they're not Fry Island residents there?
No, no, they're rarely kicked in.
But the US Postal Service.
Right now, where do you, when you pull, pull off at your mail, where do you park?
Right in front of the boxes.
Is that off the road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are the new boxes going to be off the road? Enough for them to pull off and, okay?
We're just going to take them off the old property and move them across the road.
Yeah, but I want to make sure there's enough room for them to pull off to get out of their car to be, their mail.
There'll be an access for them, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can flare, that, that's a good point. I'll make it, make it, we'll flare the gravel, um, well, maybe we can even pave it locally, you know, just...
Well, that's your pickup area, yeah.
No, 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 we're not going to invite people to do that. That's another, that's another crossing. We don't want to do that.
All right, crossing is the next one, and I think that's... Probably still an issue. Mark, what have you done to make this a safe crossing?
We have, um, well, for one thing, um, there is no vehicular crossing anymore. So if, in, in comparison, that makes it safer by, by design. What we've done is put a, um, a crosswalk in. The sidewalk terminates with enough sight distance in both directions to make that happen, and we've added an overhead light to light, light the area. There'll also be signs indicating that, uh, you know, pedestrian crossing ahead, you know, ferry landing ahead, and so there'll be caution. So I think that, again, um, have to keep the context in mind here that most of the traffic will be on the north side of that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
My share of the traffic, when there's a lot of traffic, is going to the ferry. It isn't going to be going by. So, and this is on the, is on the downstream side of that, so it isn't going to be a big issue.
And we're going to, from the sidewalk, you're going to try to maximize the sight distance by doing a little bit of clearing?
Yes, yes. If you want me to show you.
No, that's right, I just wanted to make sure that was still on the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Seems good to me.
I think it's talking about best that you can get.
The only thing I might suggest, really busy times, because I know, for me, when you got one of those big cones out on the, out on the middle line...
Yeah.
Just for busy weekends, just, you may want to do something, and have one of you guys should set that out there, because when I, when I see those, I, they make me slow down.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Um, do we, we specifically identify a handicap, uh...
You're on the square, right?
No, no, uh, uh, where the pedestrian crossing is and the curb tips down, do we need a, uh...
Oh, you want me to show where the wheelchair ramp is? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you want a little handicap, uh, pebbled surface right there?
Yeah.
Truncated domes.
Hmm?
Truncated domes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, truncated domes.
Is that what they're called? Okay, no problem. All right, I think that takes care of safe and healthy conditions. Is there any other problems in the area? Jesus. Number one, does... Will not result in water pollution erosion, cemetery, cemeteration to surface waters. We're waiting on the plan?
Well, we're waiting on their DP approval. Also, I've asked, uh, Mr. Gray to address, um, how he's met our latest ordinance, specifically the percentages of the parking lot that are being treated, percentage of green spaces in the lot. Um, they've maintained fifty spaces, so they don't need a waiver, because they're at the fifty maximum that we allow. Um, but we do need some documentation on how those, uh, design criteria have been met.
No problem. They, they are met.
Okay, but now, they're met, too, I, in, in the stuff I think that you submitted, there was lots of words like most in, in almost everything, and I think our, our, if I'm not mistaken, our regulations require, capula, um, ordinances require that we collect all out of parking lots, all runoff out of parking lots. Is that what we're doing?
I'll have to, I'll have to review it.
Okay.
I think, I think that we can, with a straight face, um, make statements that I feel we can, I mean, whether, whether, whether you agree with it or not, you can decide. I think that, you know, we've done everything we can.
Our standard is fifty percent of the parking surface. What we discussed was for paved lot, but what we discussed here, where if this was going to be gravel, we wanted to see it closer to one hundred.
I thought we made the Boy Scouts do a hundred percent.
They did a hundred percent, and it was a gravel lot.
Oh.
And they, they agreed to that.
Right.
We typically would like to see the lots paved for runoff and sediment control.
Right.
So our standard is fifty percent of the sediment off of a paved lot. What we suggested to these folks, if they want to maintain the gravel lot, we don't want to see it closer to one hundred percent treatment, so we don't have that gravel migration.
Just, just so you know...
Retention, I thought.
Yeah, treatment.
I think it says retention.
The high point of the lot is right here. In all of this area, um, with the exception of a little tiny wedge, is tributary to this basin.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're essentially treating a hundred percent of the park, you know, the parking surface.
Amy, it's in, uh, the new article, but it's in Part Five B. In addition to the minimum stints in Article Nine, Section X, all parking lots shall provide treatment through practices involving buffer infiltration measures, wet pond construction, or engineered design in such a manner as to treat at least fifty percent of the runoff from impervious surfaces proposed by the development.
But isn't there some other one in there about parking lots? I thought it was a special one that had to deal with parking lots that required a hundred percent.
No. Because before we had no, we had no value before. Before it said all, and it became very subjective. As to what?
All right. When I get, when I get home, I'm going to look at that highlighted copy, and I'm going to find it.
All right, no, it still has to meet the pre and post for our stormwater standards, so that is probably maybe where you're thinking the retention.
Oh, maybe, all right. Okay. Adequately provide disposal of all wastewater. Start next.
What's my understanding, that there are no additional wastewater facilities? It could, we've currently, I visited tonight, they currently have a, an outdoor, you know, porta potty basically there on site.
Which is located down here somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's at the top.
To the end of the ferry trailers.
Right, right on that part.
Okay, so it's right, actually right here by the phone pole.
Okay, so it's on that end of, of the parking lot.
Right.
There's a porta potty.
And will that be still located there, or are we doing something different? I, I know at one point we, there was talk about maybe redoing the whole building down there, but is there a septic system on the lot now, and will the porta potty be for parking customers or visitors? How does that work?
I believe that the porta potty is just for folks using the ferry and the...
Yeah, right, and the septic is in that high-shaped lot.
Yeah, I saw there was a little spot up in there, yeah.
Yeah, which is six or eight years old, I think six years it was done over. It's on the opposite side of the street.
So basically, the wastewater will be handled through a portable wastewater facility?
Yeah, there's an existing inside plumbing in that, in that small building that they have as well, so.
And that's open to the public?
Pardon?
That's open to the public?
No, it's not, and that's why the porta potty.
Okay.
The porta potty is provided just for the service to folks.
But basically to serve this application for park and ride, it's a portable bathroom.
Yeah, and for folks just using, you know, you know, the ferry as a matter of course, while they're waiting.
Will not have any adverse impact on spoiling grounds of fish, aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife habitat. I think you gave us a letter on that.
Yes.
On the pagonias, is that what it was?
That's right. I think we're clean on that.
All right. Any questions on that one? Uh, will conserve short cover and visual, as well as actual points of access to inland waters?
There is one point I want to bring up on this one. Um, I brought it to Mark's attention this evening. Uh, with the improvements of the sidewalk on the ferry landing, the end of that, they are within seventy-five feet of the high-water mark to the lake. That will require, um, likely an NRPA permit from the DEP, so that's something that we'll need to see, you know, and that's all being reviewed by the DEP, but that's something, another piece of the DEP puzzle we'll need to see.
Okay.
And there is one tree, I think, that was coming down.
Yeah.
You'll have to coordinate with Chris as far as how to compensate for that tree cutting.
Yeah, we're, the trouble we're having is where to put it, you know?
I can meet you on the site.
Okay, so we can figure that out, all right.
All right. Uh, will protect the archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. I think you've, I think you've met that. Jim, do you have any concerns of that one? Uh, will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing and maritime activities and commercial fisheries of Maritime Activities District.
Nope.
You okay? Will, uh, will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development and use? And is in conformance with the provisions of Section Fifteen Land Use Standards. So that takes us. We are right then, okay, so under here, we've still got, we've got the lighting that's still hanging.
Well, we have the lighting, the, the parking areas, stormwater component, we still need to rectify.
Right.
Um...
And where does the runoff, where are we going to address that, um, the runoff once, and the culvert? Culvert, Mike, it, I got my words mixed up. The one you're paving. You know that ditch we looked at?
Yeah.
Where are we going to, which section do we address that under? I just don't want to leave all this area.
We, we, you've lost me for a second.
You tried to...
I jumped.
Wild Lake is road.
Yeah.
Down through Quarry Cove Road.
Right, Quarry Cove Road, yes.
Yeah, but that's going to be ripracked.
Okay.
As, as you requested, and Nathan, Nathan White requested it as well at the sidewalk. So we're riprapping this ditch line. Um, just real quickly, in terms of the way the stormwater works.
Yep, please.
We did the pre and post, um, you know, peak discharge rate kind of thing, and post-development is less than pre-development, as most ordinances require. DEP doesn't require that. All they're requiring is treatment because of the nature of the, of the permit and the size of it. But we're, we're meeting both the town's requirements and the, um, DEP requirements for it. But essentially, the, the meat and potatoes of this is we're capturing virtually all of this down to here. Once you get below this elevation, it gets too low to get into the basin. We're collecting all this in ditches and culverts and so forth, directing it through a, a pretreatment device, which is basically a hole in the ground that slows the water down so that you get the stuff soaked out. But it comes into this basin, and the way this basin works is it puddles up to about, most storms it won't even fill up, you know, just a few inches, settles down through the floor of the basin, and the, and that water, that retained water then bleeds out through an underdrain system into the ditch, and then out. But you get a, this is oversized, so it has a fairly high treatment factor, I think it's point three or something like that, as opposed to point four, twenty-five percent more retrieval. So it's a pretty good deal, if you look at the phosphorus numbers, So it's a pretty good deal if you look at the phosphorus numbers, we have quite a few more. You notice the water district is in here bitching, so, you know, you must have had.
Is there protection around that, that hole?
It isn't really a hole. In fact, if you don't know what you're looking at, it'll just look like a little piece of wire. It, it looks like a lot of concrete.
No, no, not that. I was talking about, you said the, the deeper hole that you're dropping it into.
Oh, but it's a, it's a sand filter.
Oh, okay.
It's a soil filter.
All right.
So you dig out three feet of soil, bad stuff, put good stuff in, and then it perks through and does all the treatment thing.
The question that, maybe not come out of parking areas, may come up in the roads and driveways, has to do with the far end of Quarry Cove Road up to the entrance of the parking lot. You can see there's a dark line where they're gonna stop paving.
Right.
You know, my suggestion was to take it up to where, the end of where their work is on Quarry Cove Road, and actually go into their lot, into their entryway a little bit. I mean, I was up there this afternoon, and I know we had storm of biblical proportions last week, but it was clear that even from the vacant lot high up above, you know, there was enough runoff that comes down through that, it does chew the shoulders of the road, and anything that tips into that tends to chew those shoulders up. So, you know, my concern is that the first, what is it, a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet of this lot access road actually comes back out onto Quarry Cove Road. The contours kind of bleed out that way. I think we should at least pave thirty feet into that lot, so that, one, you don't get tire rutting and everything else, and all chewed up in there. And again, it is a, it, just going over Quarry Cove Road, it just seems to make sense that we should take the pavement up to where the burden is, that's being put on that section of road, which is the entrance itself. That's my two cents, obviously you guys can, you know, discuss that deeper, but that's just my, from engineering and practical standpoint.
Would you like me to comment on that?
First, I'd like you to comment on the, continuing on the water. The water that's running off now, you and Nathan, I think we're talking about the culvert that's now on.
Cape Road.
Cape Road?
Cape Road, yeah.
And the res- the resolution of that discussion is?
I am in a quandary. I, I am, I am willing to salute whatever flag goes up the pole, I just don't know what it is yet.
Okay.
Okay, originally, I proposed replacing the culvert, the existing fifteen inch smoothbore culvert underneath the Cape Road with two eighteen's.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, Mr. White, um, did not want that to happen. Um, and, um, so in this, in this, this time around, we have not proposed that. So we've left it out of deference to his wishes.
Okay.
So that's the story. Do you want two eighteen's and we're, we're gonna give them to you? That's what the calculations say, but, um, you know, his, his experience indicates that, you know, the one, you know, the fifteen is gonna be fine, and.
Do we know any, Christine, any more about it?
Sure will.
Well, I, I can tell you, I did go down there again this evening to see if there was any damage or anything from the, the heavy rain we had last week. No signs whatsoever that that water even came up to the road. I mean, there are other sections, when you go down Cape Road, you can clearly see there's a lot of channelization on the shoulders. Here, there was absolutely no evidence that the water was even close to that. There was no channeling, no erosion or anything. That storm, I don't know what it was specifically on Raymond Cape, but obviously in other areas of Cumberland County, it was four and a half to five inches of rain, some areas six.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's well above or getting near a hundred year storm. You know, and that came down in a short period of time, which is even more exasperating. You would have seen even more damage. So, you know, I, I don't, I can't explain the difference between his model and what's reality, but I guess reality, in this case, I think reality would rule that there's just clearly no evidence that this floods in a tremendous storm, so I don't think, given the sensitivity that Nathan had to do to put this in, working with the neighbors and the plunge pool and everything, I don't think he wants to go there and rip it up and replace it.
All right, okay. Is it, is it a concern that, oh, is there, do you guys familiar with it? Is there, is there washover coming?
On Cape Road?
Yeah, on Cape Road, coming over the road, with the runoff coming down?
I haven't seen it, but with these alterations, I don't know.
Right.
Whether there's gonna be additional load.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, they have, they have to meet it at that point with the culvert, they have to meet the pre and the post, so that's what his model is saying.
Right, yeah, his model is saying something different things.
All right.
Mark and Sam's are.
Well, and the other one, too, is, yeah, the other one, Mr. Chair, is the one down the end of Quarry Cove Road as well.
Right.
Um, and I know we talked about, um, Nathan was talking about working with somebody, doing some more work on Wild Acres, right? Well, not with Mark, but.
He's putting in a press coat.
Yeah.
He is gonna do work.
Yeah, down Wild Acres, we had the sidewalk, we discussed that.
And is, and is that going to be, is that sized for the increased runoff from the paved road?
We'd have to check with Nathan, I don't know.
You know, typically, you know, unless they're increasing the width, there, there shouldn't be a substit-, any measurable difference between the gravel surface and the pavement. They're both considered impervious.
It's true. You know, and, and as a matter of fact, there is less, um, because we're, we're removing some of the tributary area, area to the culvert that goes under Quarry Cove Road.
Mm-hmm.
So there's actually less peak discharge to that culvert after the development.
He's gonna dig that out, make it a bigger pool at the inlet side of that culvert.
All right.
Are cross swales in that culvert slowed water down? Like, that's what, were they?
Yes, Jim has asked me to put in some check ins.
Okay.
And I will put in some check ins.
We're talking now about all the sections of, uh, G, right?
That's in a different section.
Yes, yes.
Then I guess my question becomes the next paragraph on the next page, where the question is about the size and whether it's adequately sized or not.
That was, that was a concern we had in the previous application. They've submitted the same documentation justifying the fifty spaces from, based on the study that was done by Mr. Eaton.
My biggest question is, is that in this section, it says that it's not adequately sized, but in another section of your memo, it says that it is adequately.
That's a typo of my part, is it, it, the project is in conformance, it shouldn't be enough.
Okay, then that answers my question entirely. I was confused by how in one section it was not in conformance, and in another section it was.
Eliminate that section, that paragraph.
All right, then. Move on to this underline.
It was, 'cause I used the.
Pointing out the mistake.
Yeah. It was a, it was a pasting error.
All right, that brings us to, um, Article ten.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, as we're starting with, uh, paragraph D, parking and circulation. Um, those with the new manual, it's on page one zero two.
Yeah, um.
Starts, right?
Where are you?
I'm on one zero two. Isn't that where you, uh?
For site plan review standards?
Yeah, site plan review, Article ten. That's what I have earmarked, 'cause I think that, that's what you showed.
Oh. Should be, first one should be preservation of landscaping.
Yeah, it is, but I was just gonna follow with your memo here, but we can do that.
Well, that's what I had, preservation.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry, okay.
Um, preservation of landscaping, um, again, given the nature of this project, there's not a whole lot of room for landscaping. Uh, it's more about preservation. The only area that Mark and I have talked about was the back slope where he's grading to get to that filtration area. There's quite an expanse there. One of my concerns is when you start taking that front row of trees out, you expose trees that, you know, are thin underneath, so the idea was to fill that in quicker, he was gonna plant some trees there, so it kind of provides some screening of the lower levels.
I think you mentioned that tonight already, didn't you? You mentioned tonight that that was part of.
Yes, it is, that's what it initially.
And that's essentially the only area that you can really do any kind of screening or, or landscaping, it's the only open area that's available for.
We are adding some, some plants in the, uh, in the islands on the parking lot.
Okay.
Some of those begonias? Okay, board okay?
Fantastic.
Uh, and B, uh.
No structures, so.
Yep, no structures, so C, vehicular access.
And again, the changes, the change from the previous application is, uh, we no longer have the queuing going ninety degrees across Cape Road, now it's, it's a, basically it's all lane on Cape Road. Um, the circulation of the parking lot, uh, allows for parking on both sides of the lot. The fire department required the turnaround at the end, so there's adequate, you know, movement to somebody to get in and get out if the lot's full. Um. The only thing I had with that again was, you know, the idea of, I think we should pave the whole entire length of Quarry Cove Road, uh, into the immediate entrance of the lot, uh, again, just so that, you know, people coming and going, gravel, you've seen it, they chew their tires up, you end up with a big puddle and a big rut, and that's just gonna lead to more problems on Quarry Cove Road, so I think if we pave that, we eliminate that issue. Uh, and then I asked for, which is gonna provide, um, uh, the site distance from the pedestrian crossing. We probably should also have on Quarry Cove Road, I don't think it's an issue on either one. Uh, and then lastly was, uh, uh, you talked about clearing a little bit more on their property, and I guess the question the board may want to ask, is that something that the town wants to take an easement, so, or, you know, somehow have it an approval so that that's maintained, so in ten years?
Right.
So if they don't do it, the town or someone has the right to go in and maintain that clearing.
Okay, Mark, start off by telling us why you don't want to continue the paving up and into the apron.
I was, I was up in time to see that.
I think I set you up nicely, didn't I?
Yeah, well, he's, well, he's had, uh, you know, three times, and I have only had none. Now, the reason that we stopped.
You got thirty seconds, Mark.
Time's up.
Here's the deal. The reason initially why we wanted to pave this was because we recognized that a lot of the problems that were experienced by the folks in Wild Acres Road are, were the very thing that happened in this, you know, this past weekend, whenever we had the gully washer. What happens is, when you have this long, steep section of road that isn't, that doesn't have a really good, um, crossloop on it, even with a half inch per foot crossloop, you can see the vectors here. If you look at the perpendicular distance on a steep road like that, the, the, any wa-, a drop of water that falls on the road has to travel along the road a lot further, farther, excuse me, than it would, um, if it was on a flat, see, this is a two percent slope, see how quickly the water gets off the road?
Mm-hmm.
This is like a six percent road, slope, and you see how long it has to travel? But what happens is, when you get a gravel surface like that, and you get a gully washer, and there are no trees to slow it down, it just beats on that, and once it starts a, you know, a little rivulet, it grows and grows and grows, and pretty soon you've lost the entire roadbed. And where does it end up? Right in that ditch line. It plugs the ditch line up and blah, 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 and you know, the routine. So what we decided was, originally, let's pave the steep section of the road where the water has a tough time getting up. You notice that up here, the vectors are quite a bit different, the water gets off the road quickly. We're gonna, we're gonna grade, and this is gonna be graded. So the idea was, we, we, there's a real good reason for paving it to here, and we carried it up along beyond the crest a little ways. But in our, in our discussions with the neighbors, friends of Raymond Cape, where they, they really want to retain the rural character of the road. They didn't want to look down this road and see a paved parking area, 'cause what it says is parking lot, parking lot, they want it to look like, you know, a somebody's driveway, or an access or a woods road or something like that. So the idea is we end it here, that's where you're getting the most bang for your buck. Jim's point is well taken, but it's, it's, you know, the traffic that's doing this isn't all that much different than the traffic that's doing this, and we're proposing gravel here. And bear in mind here that, um, and my friends from Fry Island have left. They had to hit the ferry. He will tell you that, uh, they are very good at maintaining gravel surfaces, they do it all the time, that's what they do. That's, all their roads out there are gravel. They have all the toys, they have all the graders and the rakes and everything, and they, they're gonna maintain this, they're not concerned at all about the point you made about it being difficult, and I'd raised that point with them, it's a good point, but they said they can, they do that all the time. They're more than willing to maintain the gravel surfaces. So the reason is, we're trying to strike a balance between what makes good engineering sense, and I totally agree with what Jim's saying. This is going to be a far more durable section of road if we pave in thirty feet and extend that paving. But from the point of view of, um, the town of Fry Island is willing to take on the additional maintenance, because we want the folks down there to feel like that this isn't really a parking lot when they walk by it.
The sign that says parking for Fry Island is not going to be.
I, I am not, what we're trying to do is respect those, and, you know, I can't believe how insensitive you've been. Unbelievable, on TV.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Can we cut that out?
I got one question, Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, on Quarry Cove Road, a private road.
Yeah.
It's gonna be being plowed by a private contractor. What's gonna happen at the end of that pavement? 'Cause I mean, these guys are, some of them can be caffeine yotters.
That's, that's, it's going to be, it's something that's gonna have to be dealt with, there's no question. I mean, you know, what I can do is, I can put, it's a good point, I can, I can create a detail, and I've done it before, where you actually, you know, excavate out portion in front of that, and you pave down into it.
Down and gravel over it.
And then you bury it. So that will, that will eliminate the, the quick bump, but you're still gonna get, anytime you have, you know, a change in surface like that, you're going to have that bump, and it's gonna be a constant maintenance issue.
Jim?
Again, reviewing it, going down there this evening, um, there's their, I guess I'll call it a borrow lot, where they have all their sand and gravel, and then there's another vacant lot to the top. The, the second lot is where a lot of water is also coming out of, so it does flatten off, and I think that somewhere either just beyond this, or just, you know, slightly up above would be the logical place to end it, because that's where the water's entering it. Um, I, I hear Mark, what he's saying is on the steep section, but again, we've heard tonight from, on a butter, part of the association, you know, to me, talking about mending fences, to me, you know, they are putting a fairly good burden on this private road. It seems to make sense that just from a travel standpoint, wear and tear on the road, we take it to their entrance, it just, I mean.
Makes sense.
Nothing more than logical sense to me.
Four to one.
Yeah, well, you lost. I, I guess, though I do have a, a, kind of a, a question on this, this is, this is a, a private road.
Private road.
Does the, do we have any real, uh, say in whether or not it's paved or not, and how much it is paved?
The only thing we can say is, does it meet a health and, healthy and safe condition?
We can.
Safe condition, I mean, it comes down to sa-, I mean, ultimately, whenever these roads come up in this situation, it always comes down to safety.
Right.
Are we gonna, is it gonna create an unsafe condition if we leave that section gravel?
Even if it's not a town road?
Even if it's not a town road. And that becomes a difficult position for you to be put in. Again, logically speaking, it just seems to me that the burden stops right there. To me, it eliminates any question if you pave to where they're putting the burden on.
Mm-hmm. What, what's the board feel?
Fry Island wants to fix it, let them. They wanna build it the way they want. That's what I think.
I feel like it ought to be up to the road association for that road, if they wanna have it paved, let them have it paved, I don't think we should tell them what to do with their road.
Well, I think, it, it sounds as if, I know this came up the last time as well, um, there's gonna be an issue about the burden of their right on that road, you know, I think it was, the idea was that, that all those lots went in, it was the idea that everybody was gonna have one house lot, or, you know, but obviously, when you have a large tract of land like this, it's not gonna be, if it was, if it was subdivided for other future subdivision holders, but they'd all be a player equally. I understand what the association is saying here, is that all of a sudden we've got one property, you know, that's a big burden on this, and I think that's gonna have to be something that's gonna have to be worked out civilly, it's nothing that the town can enter.
But wait, I, I would like to comment on that, 'cause this is, I think it's a legitimate concern, but I also, you have to point something out, is the folks, I don't know how long Quarry Cove goes, road goes, but the, the impact used that these folks, Fry Island uses, just from here to here. That's the first point. Second point is, that, um, if we're talking, going to talk about sharing, why shouldn't the Quarry Cove Association share in the paving of the road?
Take it up with them.
Let's see, and that's the point I'm making. I don't think that the board should get into this.
Well, the question is that, if you come back, though, make a change, are you gonna come back to the board with a change?
What change?
If you have to pave it.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody, anybody wants it paved, um, beyond here. I think the, the idea behind paving this is to solve an erosion problem.
Whose idea was it? To pave it? Was it you guys?
You guys.
Oh, so you took our suggestion to pave it?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, no, we didn't, that was, that was, the idea was, you know, this is, you know, we're gonna be using this road, it's an erosion problem.
All right.
We were trying to be accommodated.
Okay, go ahead.
One important thing to understand that, if it's the kind of road association that most of these roads are, you cannot assess for paving. It's specifically in main law. So you cannot get, make them pay for paving if you're gonna pave it. So understand that first. So understand that first. I, I'm in agreement. I think one big hole.
We're not asking them to pave it. Don't give them money.
One big hole in this is Fry Island hasn't gone to this road association and worked this out. And then the whole thing of, of use, like our road association.
I'm not sure that's true.
Yeah, they're vague right now.
Well, but I mean, for this project issue and the, the paving and everything else. In our road association, it's basically, they take everybody, they just split the cost equally. It's not based on how far you live down the road. Other ones.
Can of worms.
Other ones do charge by how far you live down the road. So I don't know how their association's set up, but I think it's something that Fry Island should be dealing with.
And I think, I think that they're essentially, I think the intent is to, for the Fry Island to pretty much maintain from here to here. And I don't think that there's any problem with us actually writing that into the note. If you want us to put a note on the drawing that we'll, that we would maintain the road from here to here. Obviously, we're paving it, we're putting in brick wrap. This is a significant chunk of.
That would be perfect. That would be perfect. And that would take care of it all.
You good with that, Jim?
One of the things you haven't taken into account is that every yard of gravel, every yard of brick wrap, this goes to Fry Island. Goes into the park, uh, goes into the gravel area, gets dumped there.
It's stored there.
It's stored there, then reloaded and goes to Fry Island.
Yeah, that's the whole purpose of it.
Right. We gotta keep it going. I know, but we can't stop for discussions. All right. Were we, vehicle access, parking and circulation?
Yes.
Is that, so next, right?
Well, that's my place here.
Yeah, no, I think we were on parking and circulation.
Uh, we were on the Cape, Cape Road widening portion of vehicle access.
Right. Lay on design of all the means of all, vacular and pedestrian circulation, including walkways, interior drives, parking area shall consider.
Yep.
Right, general interior circulation, separation pedestrians, and vehicle travel.
I think the point that the applicant wanted to make there was the recommendation by the public works director to have full-time inspection services during the construction. Obviously, those details need to be worked out as to, as Mark said, the details of that.
Yeah, you okay with that?
I'll meet with Mr. White and we'll, we'll sort out what he wants and we'll get it, we'll, actually, I can, I can actually have a series of construction notes on the approval drawings, so you can see that they're there.
Perfect.
And in response to an earlier comment, this entire project is performance bonded.
Yeah, I know.
But just to let the public know.
Oh, okay.
You know, you know, that everything is protected. So if they, if they do decide that they're not gonna finish for whatever reason, the money would be there to complete.
Do you like paving a private road?
Well, if they, if they, what they propose is bonded.
Okay, the whole thing.
The whole thing. So if they have it, if the board approves it up to station one plus thirty to be paved, it'll be estimated up to one thirty will be paved and the other piece will be gravelled and that value be placed on it.
Okay, E, service water drainage. Adequate provisions shall be made for service drainage so that the removal of the surface water shall not adversely affect neighboring properties downstream conditions. I think you've kind of, we've kind of covered that.
We've covered that kind of in duplicate, where it kind of depends on the DEP permit and him addressing our current ordinance.
Section F, the site plan shall show that provisions are being proposed for water supply and wastewater disposal, electric telephone, other utilities lines. I think you've got that, underground utilities going up, the lights.
The only question.
We'll show additional details as soon as we get the lighting, you know, settled down.
Okay.
Yeah, the only question I had is because of the distance, I don't know where he'll need a transformer. I mean, it's a long distance electrically from Cape Road up to that parking lot. So, you know, I don't know if he can come off Cory Cove Road or anything to split the difference, but it's just the long run. He may need an intermediate transformer.
Okay.
Depends on the load.
Right, and we'll sort that out.
Yep.
All right, Lloyd, utilities. Uh, special features? I don't think we have any, do we?
Uh, the only thing I had was solid waste removal, um, security, things like that.
And we're gonna have, I guess I'm gonna say, we're gonna have some sort of agreement between the two towns here on the trash, policing of the parking lot, removing of the trash.
Right now, we just have a, a parking lot maintenance plan.
Yeah, you have like a one paragraph.
Yeah, essentially, it's a note on the drawing that, that basically says it's going to be mainly, it's, we're going to go up there and police the area and then pick up the trash and that sort of thing. So it's gonna be no containers, it's carry in, carry out.
And that note's gonna go on the plan?
I believe it's on it now.
I think it's on there now.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, item H, exterior lighting?
Yeah, we've beat that down. We're not going back there again tonight.
I think we should review.
This is not the shoreline.
You'll be alone.
Uh, emergency vehicle access, you took care of that with the turnaround? And I guess the fire department's all okay with the size.
Yes, the fire department's okay with that.
Landscaping, we've already talked about, and the standards of regulations, that was in Article nine of land use ordinance, we've already gone through.
And the only other consideration would be, as Mark mentioned, which is already, will be addressed, is discussion on the easement conveyance to the town of Raymond for the ten-foot additional. That word, that verbiage and that review, we have to be legally sorted out. But they're in agreement too. It's just a matter of two sides agreeing the language or somebody proposing language.
What we'll do is we'll have, we'll have an easement drafted, you know, for the town's attorney to review.
So just going through, Jim, your notes, some things, the public works director has pointed out, he wants to see details and have plans reviewed for the specs of the grinding, blending, compaction of the materials. You okay with that?
Yep.
Third-party consultants we talked about, you're okay with that?
We're not thrilled about that, but we, we'll do it. That's what, that, what Mr. White wants.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would say that full-time inspection maybe, maybe overkill. I think periodic inspection would be.
What about the, uh, Cumberland County? That, you know, they usually do this stuff for us with a decent.
Well, they'll do erosion control. They won't get into actual street construction.
Oh, okay.
This is street construction that Nathan's looking at. The actual compaction, the blending of pavements, gradation of pavements, things like that, meeting town standards, the town road.
I'd be willing to propose something. I mean, really, really where the, where the inspection would, would be most important is when we're putting the base in. Because there's going to be some areas where we've already got base, we don't need to replace it. And other areas where we need to base it. So having a third party there to kind of supervise that and make sure that happens. But once that happens, I don't think you need to hang out there.
No, not until the paving goes down, then you might want a paving inspector.
You might wanna come out on paving day or something like that. All right, I'll put some verbiage in there to cover that.
Yeah, talk enough and.
Pit, test pit data, only one spot?
Yeah, we've got the.
That's covered.
That's for the pond.
Pond.
Oh, yeah, the pond outlet?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
Any other mine notes? Anybody else's comments? You know, you're okay with what we're waiting for? This is.
I took it with the ask.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we've done it yet or not. It may be just worthwhile at this point, just to get the record rolling that you're, the board is willing to accept the application at this point for processing. I don't think we've done that at this point.
I think you're right.
Just for a process.
Just for.
Yep.
Do we do that, do we do, might do that by a vote? A motion as a vote?
Usually by motion as a vote.
Okay.
Will we accept the application with, I don't know.
No, just, we're just accepting the application as presented.
Accept the application.
Second. Oh, discussion, laws in favor, opposed. Thanks, Jim. All right.
All right, so it falls in my court.
See you next year.
And what's, uh, what's to do? So Mark is gonna see if we can get the dates here for you.
All right, we have. Goodbye. Thank you. Well, I have three pages that dealt with you. Excuse me, the, we still have a meeting that's going on here. We still have some stuff that has to get done. Thank you.
Is that, is that the county law or is this something new?
Something new, something amended.
The only thing you need to find, I think, is Mary's letter and, um, Mr. E. Waltz's, you know, uh, letter.
Yep, John's and Mary's. Yep. All right, it's all.
All right, um. Okay. So I, I made some slight amendments to the original memo that I submitted to you. I adjusted the definition to Mary's municipal use definition, which had some minor changes to it. But all in all, it's pretty much consistent with what Jim had proposed also. And if you've all read that memo, you know that she's brought up a few issues.
Yep.
That it's, it's really kind of up to the board to make some decisions as to how you wanna proceed with that. Just to sort of summarize, she's essentially stating that if you decide to move forward with a definition for municipal, then there's a couple of things that you will need to articulate. One of them is why similar uses by other municipalities would be, would, would not be permitted in the LRR one and LRR, LRR two zones. The second issue was that it, this is actually not mentioned in the land use ordinance. It's specifically a shoreline zoning issue cited in the land use table and the shoreline zoning. The board may want to articulate why the amendment is not needed in the land use ordinance. The bigger issue here is, you know, and I think we've touched upon it in the past, is that you have municipal cited in your shoreline zoning ordinance where the model ordinance and most other communities that I've seen have institutional or government use. It was changed in two thousand and we're not sure why. There was an amendment done to your ordinance to change that to municipal. She's saying that the distinction is basically, you know, most ordinances will have a definition for municipal, but they don't actually have it as a use. The use is, you know, whatever it may be, the school or whatever public facility, they identify that facility. They don't identify a municipal use. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
All right. So essentially, you need to decide if you want to have the definition. And if you do want to have the definition, if you wanna follow her instruction and articulate why, essentially why you have the definition and why that def, why a municipal use can only be a municipal reuse associated with the town of Raymond. And why it excludes other municipalities.
I like this definition. I don't see the need to clarify it anymore. I think it's, it's a standalone statement. I don't think it's prejudicial or exclusionary at all. It just, it establishes a use.
You bring up a good point, which I had to thought of, because municipal really isn't a use. A school's a use.
Right.
You know, public works garages, that's a use. Municipal is own, is not really a use.
Exactly. She's suggesting that if there are uses that you don't want in a zone and perhaps it's, you know, a garbage incineration facility, then identify that use and make sure that it's distinctly not permitted.
Whereby leaving municipal, you could put a gar, you could put a garbage incinerator.
That list could be as long as forever.
It, it also grandfather's in any existing municipal, municipal uses. She also clarified that fact. It's a complicated issue.
What was it, what was it before two thousand, before it was changed?
The model, I believe the model shoreline zoning ordinance has government or institutional use. It doesn't identify, um, it doesn't define that as a particular town use. It doesn't say an institutional use must be in the town of Raymond.
Can you change municipal to government and implement this as the government definition?
You, you have an, I, I believe there is already an institutional or something along those lines identified in the shoreline zoning ordinance that's probably left over from the original model ordinance carried into your ordinance.
As a definition for institutional.
It will not restrict other communities from coming in and purchasing land and using it for whatever uses are allowed in your zone already. And that's, when you, when you, when you do it this way with this municipal use definition and then have municipal use identified in your land use table, it restricts any other, you know, with the exception of, of the text and how you've identified it in this definition, it restricts to some extent other municipalities coming in and using that land for a municipal use. Which, you know, it wouldn't do that if you use that terminology, government or institutional use. However, if you've restricted it as a use, you know, in, in some other part of the table, they can only use that parcel in accordance with what you allow in your shoreline zone.
So, so if a town other than Raymond owns a lot in a shoreline zone, and we have the municipal use terminology. How does that?
Well, according to this, if they have some sort of agreement with the town of Raymond, and the town of Raymond is, you know, involved some, some way contractually or whatever.
Or as a benefit to the community.
Has a benefit to the community, is identified, which is somewhat subjective, I think. Then they are allowed to move forward with any municipal use that fits into this term, terminology. As long as it also agrees with all of your other allowed uses.
Yeah, I see.
So if a municipality comes, comes, another town comes in, buys a property, and they want to go ahead and, I hate to use this as an example because I don't wanna come off the top of my head without looking at parking lots. That still is a, is an allowed use under, in a shoreline zone. So even if we, even with this definition, they could build a parking lot.
Only if, if they have a previous, if they wind up with an agreement with the town first.
Yes, that would prevent them from building a parking lot unless they meet this definition. And in the definition.
It'd be a.
They have to have.
But a parking lot's a, a, an allowed use.
Yeah.
Exactly. But as a mun, but a municipal use is then restricted from this definition. That's what, those are the issues she's identifying in this memo.
It gets, it gets kind of messy.
Right, uh. And I'm not sure, I think what, what the next step is, and I hate to drag this on to another meeting, but I think the next step is to find out why it was not, why it was amended to begin with. And I'm not sure we'll be able to do that, but we think, Danielle and I think that we might be able to find out from Mike Morris because it would have probably had to have gone through DEP for approval. So if they have a record of it, then we might be able to determine why that was even changed to begin with. I mean, I've looked at five or six different shoreline zoning ordinances. I've not seen anything even similar. The standard language is institutional or governmental use.
Our, our planner, Hugh Cox, he, he was here, I think.
Two thousand and five, was when he started.
Bob Fontz?
Oh, I know Bob Fontz. I could talk to him too.
Yeah, maybe that, maybe he would.
Yep.
Would have some.
Yeah, his records get pretty dicey before two thousand and five, six, we didn't really keep the warrant articles and minutes kind of.
Right, then I could be in the minutes. All right, let's drag it out because I don't think it's gonna, I don't think this is gonna work.
Well, and I think before you make a change like this, it really needs to be.
Yes, I agree.
It's a really question. Do you wanna go through any of the rest of these or do you wanna? I mean, initially, I think you said you just wanted to do municipal use. I don't know.
That was it, but I mean, I think, yeah, let's just go, take a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Let's do it.
One of the changes that I made, I had a different setup here for accessory use or building. The original definition that you have, it's getting late, but I think this is in your land use ordinance, is accessory use or building.
Mm-hmm.
And building is also defined. So my, my thought was that really all you need to do is accessory use and change that to structure so that it agrees with the other aspects of your ordinance and it also agrees with your shoreline zoning definition. The only thing I left out is there's a supplemental sentence in the shoreline zoning definition that has to do with decks. Are you familiar with it? And I think it's really specifically geared towards that zone.
I'm not familiar with it, but.
And it's not, probably not necessary.
Are you talking about the, uh, the new definition of a use or structure?
No, in the shoreline zoning.
It says.
There's an accessory structure or a use definition.
The last sentence says a deck or similar extension.
Okay.
Or the principal structure or a garage passed to the principal structure by a roof or a common wall is considered part of the principal structure. I'm not sure if that's.
Yes, I am familiar with that.
I'm not sure if that's necessary to transfer that as well to the land use ordinance or if it's something that's really more.
I think that's more for shoreline zoning.
So that's just a small adjustment to the, to the definition. I'm assuming that this definition was pulled from somewhere at some point. Building is never, I can't find in your land use ordinance any instance where building needs to be associated with that term as accessory, um, accessory use. You agree with that, with the planners?
Question for Chris, that, that wording in the, in the shoreline is probably tied to the thirty percent?
Yes, and also, for instance, if you have a patio or a deck that's associated with the principal structure and it's.
And I added these in as no, no, and CEO, is that correct, the way I-
Yes, you got it right.
Um, seventeen, adding boat launches because of the work that we did last year, the amendment. And lastly, parking areas, areas should be red and underlined actually. So taking out the word facilities and changing it to areas to agree with the amendments from last year as well. Number three, street ordinance, L, required in plans, so I changed the four to letter L for a new street or expansion of an existing street that is to remain private, the application shall include a plan setting forth how a street and the associated drainage structures and required buffers and stormwater management facilities are to be maintained. That was per our meeting last week. Is everyone happy with that?
The only change was also the agreement shall be known around-
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. And at the end, yep.
We ran into that with one of the private roads we did and, you know, we just-
Yep. So we added that in. Um, this is the reduced plans.
Yep.
So including five half-size scale copies in an electronic file in both PDF and GIS formats for Danielle.
No, how did we come up with five?
I may have made that up. It's probably six, huh?
Yeah, we'd want, we'd want-
Imagine what, seven.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, seven, all right.
Yeah, I was going to say-
Yeah, that might have just been me.
It's just the number, that's all.
All right, so, okay, accessory, accessory apartments, was a discussion that we had and, um-
Who's, excuse me, did you have some other, is it half-size when we were talking about this?
Oh, a scaled half-size, she's got the word scaled in here.
Okay.
She's got that.
Okay. Sorry.
Um, accessory apartments, so in the land use ordinance, right now, we have a definition that is essentially from our discussion la, last month, it really belongs as a section in the minimum standards. So I've moved it into the minimum standards as a section and added a definition. Want me to read the definition?
No.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
In your section, Article nine, Z, accessory apartments, it talks about lot coverage and it talks about existing structure, an accessory apartment shall not cover the lot by more than thirty percent, including the area of the septic system. It kind of contradicts our shoreline zoning. Shoreline zoning is fifteen percent lot coverage for one thing, and then the other thing is all our zones, and this may be something that we want to have a lengthy discussion on, is we have in all zones, you cannot, the aggregate of the buildings cannot cover more than fifteen percent of the lot. So if you've got this, you can do an accessory apartment and you can do up to thirty percent.
It's a big apartment.
That's, yeah.
It doesn't really make sense.
No.
Well, they're, but they're, they are, which is another problem, they're also pulling in the septic system footprint into that percentage, which we aren't, we aren't doing anywhere else.
Right. So maybe we need to really discuss that and do a little thinking on that piece before we nail this down.
Okay.
I, I had a comment also, Stephanie, on, on the Z accessory apartments.
Yep.
When I first read this, it didn't seem to allow for the possibility that a septic system might be designed in advance for future bedrooms, but it does in a behind the, behind the fence sort of way. The paragraph that says if the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms exceed by more than one, the number of bedrooms that the existing system is designed for, a replacement or expanded system shall be installed for occupancy. Fine. I think we need to modify the next sentence that says if the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms increases by one, a replacement or expanded system shall be designed and recorded. I think we need to modify that to say if the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms increases by one, the number of bedrooms that the existing system is designed for, a replacement or expanding system shall be designed and recorded.
Can we make it simpler? We simply say the number of bedrooms exceed what the existing system is designed for? I think that's what you're trying to get at, but this-
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I, increases by one, I never quite-
But what she's saying here is- If it increases by more than one, like two bedrooms.
This is actually, this is, this is what you're-
Then if the existing system has not been designed for that, then you must expand and install. If the, if the proposed apartment only increases the total by one, then you have to design it, you don't necessarily have to install it.
That's main sub- circuit waste law rules. That's what the state rules are. If you're in the shoreline zone, you don't have a choice, you have to upgrade the system.
Okay.
But in, in rural areas that are not in the shoreline zone, if you have a system for three bedrooms and you add an accessory apartment with one bedroom, you have to have a system designed that can handle the fourth bedroom, you have to record that at the registry of deeds, but you do not have to install it. Why, I don't get, but that's the way main law is.
Okay. But the, that sentence that I suggested we modify, if we don't modify it, even if the system is designed to accept the additional one bedroom, it says you still have to design another system unless we modify it with the language in the previous sentence that says the number of bedrooms that the existing system is designed for.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Those five or six words that the existing system is designed for.
Right, so if it was designed for four.
Needs to be in the next sentence, too.
You get a three-bedroom house and you add a bedroom, you don't need to do another design.
Right.
I get it, I get what you're saying.
I'm just saying, somebody's going to get tripped up by that and be forced to design another system when the current one is vertically fine and it's only one bedroom. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Okay, so maybe Chris and I can work out that line.
We can, we can work with that.
That's actually your existing language, I just kind of pasted.
Oh.
That's your rules now, so maybe-
It's red. She's made it in red and underlined.
Yeah.
And the other comment, Danielle and I were just talking about the appeals board may grant an additional five percent. That's to that thirty percent number.
So thirty-five.
So we, where, you know, do they have to prove hardship or what is the criteria?
So this really needs to-
So we need to kind of really look at this and probably talk to town attorney as well on that one.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll revisit municipal use and everything else we're okay with. Perfect. For a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.